Lesson for the six shoulder, I'm not a skier myself, so I will be observing from the sidelines.
Oh, you're not?
No, you're so?
Yeah.
Snowboarder skiing? So?
Good evening, welcome to this evening's study session. Our first agenda item this evening is the police building project update. Public Works interim director Larry Nemo and Donovan Nolan from CBRE are here to provide an update on the Inglewood Police Department Headquarters Building replacement project. Good evening, gentlemen.
And we also have Commander Bradshaw with us tonight.
Great, it's good to have you.
I never do it, I'm sorry.
It never happens.
Commander, thank you. I work with Vance Bradshaw, and that's what's gotten me confused at times. So, good evening, council. We're here tonight to provide a brief update on the police building. I think our last update was February 12th. We're trying to keep these going about every three months or so, every couple of months. We'll see how they go. It's going to get to a point where it may not be quite as much information. Where it may not be quite as much information. Couple of the things we have done since the last meeting is we've launched, and I don't know that you guys get a copy, but I'll make sure you get it. We've got a page on our webpage now that actually keeps the police building going. CBRE provides us some information for that. We also, if you'll notice on Facebook and Instagram, we've got some drone shots, which is going to work great until the building actually goes to a building, and then won't be too useful after that because you can't see inside of the building. But we did want to, we really want to push the updates, at least from now till about summer is what we're thinking, and it's going to get a little more boring. It's more, everything will be inside. But right now, it's kind of exciting. So, just wanted to let you know, we are committed to providing the best possible product to the city of Inglewood for the best price. So, as of now, I'll turn it over to Donovan, who is our project manager for CBRE.
Thank you once again. We'll go through kind of our typical update. It is brief, short, and to the point. Obviously welcoming any questions that we go through as, or any questions you have as we go through it. So, agenda, we'll talk through construction, overall project update. Then we'll kind of jump into current budget snapshot, and then the next 30-day outlook. So, over the last 30 days, we've finished our 102 caissons. You kind of, eh, you can't really see it in the two pictures there, but in the next overview shot I give you, I can point out a couple. But we, our average depth was probably about 62 feet in the ground there. I think our deepest was 69 feet. We had to hit bedrock roughly 14 feet below bedrock, so which puts us at a minimum of like 45 feet, I think, in that range. So, 102 caissons, again, I couldn't tell you every single one of them of what our facts were, but things went well. Only had issues with one of them, resolved them quickly like that. So, that was success. Our grade beams, actually, they may be fully complete, and grade beams are what you see there, basically the foundation walls. Those, and then on the next shot, which is a drone shot, you'll kind of see the layout of the building as well. Those are complete as of the end of the week. We actually, we have underground mechanical electrical plumbing is underway. We actually had our first plumbing inspection on Friday. Our first electrical underground inspection will be later this week. So, all that stuff is progressing as planned, and coordination's going well with our entities. Utility connections, you may have driven by a couple of weeks ago when we had the road closed to the north, coordinating again our connections of the water line and our fire line, things like that. So, it gets a little muddy and a little tight around that site from time to time, but that's just part of the project, right? So, low voltage security drawings are completed. We are working through a procurement team to start the RFP package, as we mentioned last month. And then, once we have them onboard, they will start the conduit coordination and cabling piece with our electrical subcontractor onsite. So, pictures, the one on the top right is from, we'll call it the southwest looking north, and then the one on the bottom right, you can see the connection line of our new building and our old building, and how much room we don't have to work between the spaces. So, what Larry mentioned here earlier was the drone photos. This is a great example of what our new footprint looks like, and I don't know, this does work. Look at that. So, this is the west side of the building. This will be our new entrance here. I'm sorry, east directionally challenged. This is our new entrance that's coming here. If you go back to what you'll see on the last slide, this kind of gives you, here's the footprint, and then on that last slide, on that rendering we have, you'll see that beautiful storefront entrance, and that's looking right into this way. Sallyport area is over here, and then, again, just in the building, you can kind of see these little pads. These are the caissons that I was talking about, creates the grade beams. This was, I think, two and a half weeks ago taken. So, there's another set that will get posted between the next meeting, so just keep a lookout for that. Jumping into the overall budget, you can see we're still tracking on the 27 million. Right now, we have almost 24 million committed. The next piece that will be committed will be that ITAV and security piece, and those kind of fall right here in this system. We know there's going to be some coverages that we'll have to talk with, through our project contingency, just based on getting everything that's needed for the staff in the building with door security. We've been talking through this for the last two months, so we're well aware of where things are tracking. But our project contingency is still pretty healthy at 1.6. We don't have, I should, we are still working through, we're about 98% complete with our project buyout with Adolphson and Peterson. There's some final minor products, really the Phase 2 that we have to discuss, but then there's their project contingency that will, project buyout contingency that we'll go through with that, and you'll see some, probably some changes on this as we get through that for the GMP next time. So, overall, though, you can see the cost today, 3.8. We've been working monthly with the city team on that and providing our cash flow updates and things like that as needed. So, I mean, there's no major concerns on our budget right now as far as CBRE is concerned, and I think we report fairly often with, and communicate with the city staff, Larry and Eric, and then as well as the police team for any modifications or requests we have there. So, I mean, I don't know if there's any cost questions or construction questions, but, you know, overall, that kind of hits us on the snapshot for the last 60 days, or, sorry, 45 days roughly. For the next 30 days, potentially 45 days, what I like to, it's kind of an interesting structural foundation that we're putting in. The slab-on-void, which basically means we're going to have a floating foundation, floating floor. You see basically glorified packing boxes, if you will, are going to go down first, and then we pour the concrete over top, and that allows for the potential movement based on our soils report that we have. So, it allows that movement to happen without creating any major deficiencies in the actual structure of the building. So, that's, it's a practice that's more common in today's construction, so it, for some of, for those that haven't seen it, just drive by, you'll kind of see how it works out. Masonry walls are going to be going vertical, structural steel is going to be going vertical towards the end of April. Ongoing utility installations are happening, and again, the existing building demolition, we're starting that planning right now, so we can have the gap between Phase 1 and Phase 2 as minimal as possible, so that way we shorten the overall duration of the project too. Vendor procurement, the main thing is, as I mentioned, data cabling AV, that RFP goes out. Our security package pricing will be completed here shortly as well with the security central team. And then, the last piece that's not on here that I should mention is the ongoing furniture design and planning as well. That's, there's not necessarily a procurement, but it's the design process that we're going through with office escapes. Excuse me. So, that's kind of the update. As I mentioned here is that east side facade and storefront, you can kind of see the angle on the wall, I can't see it as much here, but let me know if you have any questions or if there's any concerns.
Are there any questions? Seeing on, thank you so much for the update. Thank you for the great work. We greatly appreciate it, and we're excited.
Thanks for staying on time and on budget.
Yes.
Doing what we can.
The weather has helped.
Yeah, the snow's helped us a little bit staying away, so we're not too concerned.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is reduction of speed limit from 30 to 25 miles per hour throughout the community. Public Works Director Larry Nemo and Traffic Engineer Lad Vostrey are here to discuss the speed limit in residential areas. Good evening.
Good evening, council.
So, besides Commander Fender is here with us as well. These are police representatives. I know, I did it right. This is Chris and Neil, they're both from the E-Tech Committee. I met them last meeting, but, thank you. Met them for the first time. So, we actually had a very good discussion at E-Tech, I think, and they actually gave us some recommendations. So, we're going to kind of go through a little of the history with you, and then kind of let them come up to present what they found, what their findings were at the end of the meeting. So, this problem goes back, what's the oldest you found?
It's mid-'90s.
Mid-'90s, so this is not a new issue. It's been here for quite a while, you know, and looking at possibly lowering the speed limits from 30 to 25. In your packet, we've included a lot of the old meeting minutes, E-Tech, previous E-Tech meetings. At one point in 2003, they actually brought a motion and never got seconded, and that was kind of the end of it. So, but we wanted to equip you with as much of the information as we could, and, you know, I was looking at all the different alternatives, so I'm going to let Lad kind of take over as the subject matter expert on the technical side of this.
Thank you.
Could I ask one question of clarification? In 2003, the result of that was, wasn't it that when they put the stop signs around all of the schools, though, as a result of that? There was something came out of that?
It was a separate thing.
For the police, they...
Kind of flowed out of that, I thought?
Yeah, it's just kind of, it came, yeah.
So, that's when they made, and prior to that, they didn't have the four-way stops at all the schools, school location corners, but we do currently?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Thank you, go ahead.
It's just kind of, very briefly, it's just kind of, as we were talking in the past, model traffic code actually sets the speed limits for the city, for the cities, and it sets, it's a lawful speed limit, 30 miles per hour in residential streets or districts. However, it also gives kind of okay for cities to change the speed limit, lower speed limit if they choose to through adopting the ordinance. And in a packet, there is some effects or, you know, what you have with the change of the speed limit. But for your information, it's just kind of what we did, we did about over 20 speed studies in 2017 in the residential areas, both on local streets as well as collector streets through residential areas. All of them were requested by our residents to do that. And a brief summary is just kind of what we did, we calculated the average 85th percentile speed, which means the 85% of vehicles travel at that or below the speed. And it shows that on the local streets, it was, 85th percentile was about 29 miles per hour. On the collector streets in the residential areas, about 31. If people be talking about the mean speed, which is average speed, average, average speed, it's about 22, about 22 miles per hour on the local streets and about 26 on the collector streets. Which means that, you know, on the local streets with that, average street, 50% of vehicles going at 22 or below, or 35% between 22, 29, and 15% over. It's just kind of, for your information. And that's pretty much what the overall, with the summary of these things. We were really surprised, also, I looked, we looked in some few studies, what is the percentage of the vehicles, they are going over speed limit on the local streets, and it was about a 3, 4% going over speed limit over there.
Can I ask a question? Is it okay to, you know? So, when you conducted the study and these testing at these locations that citizens asked about, did you look at cross-sections of time and of days of the week?
Yes, yes. It is typically what we are doing, at least three days, three days of the speed studies during the weekday, typically Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, which is the most, the people on the road. It's because weekends are a little bit different.
And then you did, what times of day?
It, 24 hours.
It's three days.
Oh, 24 hours a day? Ah, very good, all right. Thank you.
So, I have a question, and that 3 to 4% that's going over the speed limit, are some of them substantially over the speed limit? Because I've had people complain in some locations that people are driving pretty fast.
It's, you have, I can look on each study, but just, we have a bins, so five miles per hour speed bins. So, if it's 31 to 35 is one bin, how many cars? And it's not just kind of the number, but also when, what you have. And, yeah, you will have always folks that they do not drive how they're supposed to, they're just kind of zipping through the neighborhoods, and no matter what it is, the police will say the same thing, just kind of.
Absolutely.
Unless you will catch them, you know, to do that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
So, but that also raises your mean for your average, anyway. So, like, if you have somebody, there was for one, I don't know if you all caught this person or what, but somebody on Floyd was driving 80, 90 miles an hour, probably at 2:00 in the morning, every single day. It seemed like it was at a shift change or something, it was like at the same time. I didn't know neighbors called in. It was maybe a summer or two ago, and I don't know if it stopped or not, but that would raise these up too, right?
Absolutely, yeah. If you had even a couple of vehicles that were outliers in that statistical area, that would raise your mean, sorry, that would raise your mean substantially.
Yeah. Why I'm asking that is that it only takes one or two to be going really, really fast for people to be upset and say that we need to lower the speed limits.
And what we are looking at, just not just kind of average and 85th percentile, we are looking, what's the difference, how close they are? Because where is the mode speed, which is the, is a 10 miles per hour mode, or that the most vehicles travel? And this gives you the, also, if it's the, yeah, again, definition of speeding, just kind of where the, because drivers are typically driving at the speeds they are comfortable with, yeah, at.
Right.
Some of those drivers will go slower. Some of them will go faster, you know, that thing. What we are doing over the years to have a close relationship with the police, and we are sharing the data in terms of, if we will find out that there is a really repetition of the speeding, that the police is, you can inform about those ones. But I just want to, very briefly, just kind of, when we started in the mid-1990s, it's just kind of, two programs were instituted, which was the city program, speed watch program, and neighborhood watch, speed pledge program. And this one with police enforcement also utilizing the speed trailer, and later on, those display speed signs on the collector streets on the residential areas, lowered the 85th percentile between those two in 1985 or prior that till 2017, about 3 and a half miles per hour, which is substantial in our, which is, it might be about a 14, 15% drop in that, in that thing. So, but again, it's just kind of, it will not catch everybody who is speeding and, right?
Okay.
So, as part of this presentation, this was heavily discussed at the last E-Tech meeting. The last E-Tech meeting, I'd like Chris Dietrich to kind of present the findings, and this is Neil Sono, both members of the E-Tech Committee. I'd like them to do a short presentation on what the conclusion from the E-Tech meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, we reviewed quite a bit of data in our meeting, not only the data from the city, but we used, one of our easiest was Nextdoor as another thing that we collected a lot of information from. After looking through the reports on the speed, different vehicle speeds that were going on, and some of the complaints that were coming in from citizens, it seemed like the best solution for the city was not necessarily to enact a lower overall speed limit, but really kind of focus on some of the problem areas. And so, Councilwoman Berentine, that is a corollary to your question earlier of, you know, did some things come out of that last time? Well, not directly because of that, but it allowed the city to focus on some of the problem areas and really, you know, drill down and fix the specific areas that were an issue, rather than trying to globally address something that may not be quite the right solution for everything. And so, you know, we looked at, what's it going to cost? How are we going to enforce lower speed limits? What all is really involved? And tried to kind of dig deep into what we really need to do as a city in order to lower those speed limits, if that's what we wanted to do. And there's quite a bit of cost involved that we didn't want to push forward on the city without trying some other methods first, of some targeted remediation and some citizen involvement, which has shown to be more successful in the past than just more enforcement. You know, we'd rather like the citizens to be bought into people driving at a lower speed, rather than, you know, sort of a top-down approach that's forcing them into a lower speed. And so, that's where some of the stop signs that you mentioned, Councilwoman, were, came out of, was basically saying, okay, we have some issues, let's address the easy ones, what are the most obvious ones? Let's tackle those first, and then see if we can get some buy-in from the citizens at, you know, as a grassroots effort instead. And so, that's kind of what we're recommending. You'll see, we put a list of several different recommendations in there, and I think a combination of those will be really effective, rather than, you know, enforcement from the top down. We hate to impose things upon the citizens, especially if it's going to be increased cost of signage, and, you know, the police to enforce that was another big thing, that we just don't have a lot of extra time. And it was mentioned before, but it really seems like a smaller number of locations and a kind of a vocal minority. You know, we hear people talking about cars, we look on Nextdoor, and you might see some people saying, oh, these cars are going 50, 60 miles an hour down my street. Well, it's really hard to tell just by a first-person account how fast those cars are really going. If you're going 60 through a neighborhood, you are flying. And so, you know, we don't know what those speeds actually are. I don't know if our, you know, trailer has registered many speeds that high on residential streets. I'm willing to guess that probably not above 60, that would be crazy. But anyways, that's where our recommendation came from, was that we want to try a couple of less expensive approaches, maybe target some problem areas first before we really impose a citywide change on this. It's kind of the root of where the recommendation came from. So, we'd like to see the city try that first.
Well, just to kind of tie on to what Chris was saying there, too, my initial thoughts for this was that if the issue comes up of basically wanting to lower the speed limit, there are certain things that have to be done, and what the city has done here is in complete accordance with what should be done. And by state statute, you should be doing a traffic study. So, I was, one of the first things I looked into was to see if that was in case completed. So, looking into that traffic study, I think the data really was conclusive in that, you know, overall, there isn't that much of a speeding problem in an overall sense. Of course, there's a few problem areas there, most notably, I think, on Huron. But I think, you know, basically, the thought behind it was if there's only a few problem areas, we'd want to maybe focus on that and use these other tools to really kind of remedy that, as opposed to kind of applying just a, you know, an overall sense of just changing everything in the community for that. So, I would totally agree, and I think that the remedies that were provided here were really beneficial. They've shown to have worked before. I think they've even gotten the support of the police department as well, in terms of using speed trailers, other traffic calming techniques. I think that is the first foray into trying to get some of these problem areas addressed. And so, again, you know, if you go into the whole aspect of having to change all of the street signs, you know, it's quite additional cost. I think that study has been referenced in here as well, too. At the time, in 2003 or 2006, I think it was over $100,000 at that time. So, I think this is just the path of least resistance to try to make change for a positive in that, but really take into account everything that's been addressed here with the study. So, again, I found that, you know, the study itself was really revealing in terms of what the overall speeding is in these neighborhoods, and other than a few areas, I think it can be addressed through these other techniques.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that information. I'm going to open up for questions in just a second, and I was going to ask Commander Fender, especially in the problem areas, and one of the places where I've got a lot of complaints is from Huron, because it's pretty much a through-street. Is enforcement part of that when you identify the problem areas? Does the police department try to enforce, I mean, occasionally? Because I think that would be a deterrent also.
Sure, sure, that's a difficult question. I would say that out of our three officer traffic unit, first and foremost, our goal out of that unit is to hit high accident locations within the city, and our other goal with that unit is to hit school zones. Those are our two major targets, I would tell you, for our traffic unit. Having said that, we do respond to very specific speed-related calls, and if we have a, you know, like the council member was talking about, a vehicle going substantially over the speed limit at the same time every night on a certain street, then yeah, absolutely, we will do some extra patrols in that area and try to find out who that person would be, because that's very specific, and we can target that. I would tell you that the other areas, if we do find, I'll call them hotspot areas, for lack of a better term, then yes, we will try to do extra patrols at those areas. But I hate to commit to that, because speed enforcement at times is not responding to in-progress calls, and some of the other issues that we have. So, based on resources, I would tell you, yes, we do try to hit those as much as we can.
Okay, thank you. And this is just another question, what about the possibility of doing, like, I don't know if there's opportunities for moving violations, like Denver, in places has a van parked, and they take pictures and send tickets to people in the mail? I mean, is that anything that we could consider doing?
I'll tell you, I'm definitely not in a position this evening to speak to any sort of photo radar. I can't even, can't even speak to it. It's been brought up in front of different councils, to my knowledge, and it's not, it has not taken any, what was it, for traction?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Did it address that in the committee? That didn't come off the topic, and there was a reason we didn't put that, oh, sorry. There was a reason we didn't put that on the recommendation list, and specifically, it came down to a trust issue with the community, and the overall opinion was that the community would generally put that in an area where they feel the citizens can't be trusted to go the speed limit, and so, we didn't want to impose that on the citizens at this point.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I think when it came up to council before, there was, most of the cities were ditching it and getting sued, and so, and it seems to still be going in that direction. Sheridan's a heavy holdout, but they make a lot of money on that. They are committed to their photo radar.
They're on federal a lot.
Hugely committed, but I have no doubts that they're going to get another petition going. The biggest, and I agree with you, I think that the situation is the same one this whole issue came up before, the money to go ahead and put the, they change all the signs, and the erroneous belief that lowering the speed limit makes people follow it more than they did before, instead of enforcement. So, I think, and Julie Grisulis was the one who championed that, and was very proud of her in our area for doing that for the schools. I think that specific issue was a safety issue for all of the schools, and I think it was well done and money worth, money well spent. A lot of the issues that I'm getting are not necessarily just speed, but more like there's a speed bump there and it makes noise because they're going faster than what that speed bump can do, like Oxford and Logan, because you have to go pretty slow, or you're going to bottom of it. So, the people around there believe then that they're going over the speed limit, and they're not, depending on what kind of car you have, you have to take it kind of careful. So, maybe looking at some of that. And then I remember some of the additional stop signs, actually, that people were requesting, thinking it would lower the speed limit, actually... that people were requesting, thinking it would lower the speed limit, actually have an additional noise factor to them because the car's stopping and then restarting again. And it's the restart of the engine piece that causes a problem. So, if we're gonna do any of that, if we make sure that we, we're looking at it, you know, 'cause sometimes people think that the resolution, the unintended consequences of the resolution is a bigger problem. So, if we could take a look at some of the speed bumps that might have been a little, and dips, especially along Logan, and there were, maybe they've gotten deeper or my car's gotten lower. I don't, I don't know what's going on, but...
Yeah, the crosspans, those are drainage feature. They have nothing to do with, with speed at all. Yeah, they're not as...
It wasn't, it wasn't intention.
No, no. They're, that's to get the water to go somewhere.
Is there some way to mitigate that or it needs to be at, at the level it's at in order to do the drainage of that?
Generally, the water tells us where it's gonna go. Yeah. So, now, you said along Logan at Quincy?
No. Well, the one on Tufts. I mean, you don't have to live in that area long to, you see that sign coming up, you're talking, you listen to the radio, all of a sudden you're like, err, oh, no, 'cause your car will go down on that. So, that's just a drainage one. And people are misunderstanding that that was done for traffic. And so, I didn't even realize that. That's awesome.
I've actually done a few of them where they came out and said, you're not taking that out, are you? And I said, oh, no, we're not taking it out. She said, they go, great, because people fly through here and we like to hear those, the metal scream. And I was like, okay, well, yeah. But that's not what the purpose of this is. This is to get the water across the street, so.
All right. And then, obviously, about the enforcement, you know, for as much as we can. I mean, for a period of time, we suspended the whole traffic division as it was. So, I realize that when push comes to shove, that there's not as much priority given on that. But we'll keep it in mind as we're doing our budget and seeing where the hotspots are. So, thank you for all of the work that you did on all of this. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thanks for doing the study. We'd been talking about it for a while. We did look at photo radar. Do you remember it, I'm sure? And we came to the same conclusion, that it was just not worth the hassle of it and that we were putting out more of the, what do you call the little trailers? What do we call those trailers?
Speed trailers.
Yeah, speed trailers. And I, I wonder if purchasing a few more of those might be one of our better options when we look at the budget this year. I, I am hearing about people feeling as though people are speeding. And so, I, and often it has to do with really residential areas where there are no connecting, like there'd just be, you know, on a Vine street between two things or, you know, it's not a Downing, it's next door to that. And it's just a block or two where there are often families with kids. And you're much more cognizant, I think, when you have kids. I am anyway, and when I know there are kids around. So, if you drive down a street like that and you go 30 miles an hour, I feel like I am speeding like you-know-what out of you-know-where. It's awful. I could never drive 30 down my street. I think it's those people who do drive 30 down those kinds of streets are making people nervous. And that's who we're hearing from, at least when people call me. It's just a, it's a very simple residential neighborhood that they don't expect someone to come flying 30 miles down it. They should be driving 15 at the, at the most, almost. So, what, did you find anything in, in, you know, truly residential areas where people, that's where I think these come out of. I mean, people do speed down Downing, but I don't think the people that are calling us are the ones who are saying it's, those people on Downing are, although I have heard it on Floyd, and I think your little red spots there are exactly where, where you're probably doing your study. So, you've caught 'em there.
The speed studies on Sherman, on Lincoln, on Lincoln, Washington.
Hard to hear. See, can you repeat that? Yeah, that's right.
We did the speed studies on Lincoln, Sherman, Washington, Floyd, which is kinda, those are residential streets where the, where the residents were expressing the same concerns, that people are speeding a lot, you know, with these kind of things. And, you know, as Chris was mentioning, that, what they were talking, the, at that meeting, it was, because it probably, who is going 30 miles per hour? It's the neighbors.
Right.
So, it's just kinda if, basically some board will go, go around, say, hey, please, don't, don't, yeah, don't go, I don't wanna go in front of your house, please don't in front of mine. Maybe it's just gonna, it will have some impact on these ones. So, but I, I agree with you, just kinda in some really, really residential area where nobody expects, where you have a, really not a lot of cars, just kinda a few. That one car which goes 30 miles per hour, it seems really too fast.
And by parks as well. I think some of the parks, people fly by and those are some fairly trafficked streets that go by some of our parks. So, I guess I have a couple of other follow-up informational questions. Maybe you already have this info, but you said 50% of the cities have gone with lower and 50% stay with 30 miles an hour. Who, who has it at 25? And what are they finding out from that? Are there some that are, I, I can't think of any. I could, there's no way I could drive from my house into Denver where I work and drive 30 miles an hour either on any of those streets except University.
Right.
'Cause it's just, you just can't make it through 'cause there's too many cars and...
And if you look on, on the speed studies, which we did, those typically residential, they are really lower. They have, they have a really low, like, average speed is a 19, 18, 19 miles per hour. And, but what we did, in all fairness, we did all residential areas. Some of them have more traffic and people are traveling a bit faster. So, we include all of them as well.
So, who, so who were some of the cities, cities that went to 25? And do we know what happened in those cities when they went to that?
It's, it's, some of them. It's just kinda, for example, the city of Golden, they tried to alive at 25. They found out that didn't have any, any impact. So, the city of Denver, they, they have a 25 miles per hour. They don't sign it, though, but they found out that it's, it didn't have any impact on that.
Is it 25 throughout Denver? I thought just some areas were 25.
It's just throughout Denver.
Oh, okay. I thought it was just some areas.
And it's really interesting to, to us, it was when we were talking to residents. It just kinda, a lot of residents, they think that speed limit is at 25.
But, but it's not 25 everywhere in Denver, because there are many times where it's not.
No, no, no. It's just kinda in the specific residential areas, yeah, district.
To be honest, I think that's what people want. I think when people call me or us, I think they are bothered by their little residential areas having people speed through them. I mean, maybe, this is, and, and then I agree, don't, don't do the whole city down to 25. It's help the neighborhoods have, have a better control. And some of this will work on the highly frequented areas, but the other areas are gonna take a lot of communication. And we probably need to get our marketing communication folks involved with that and have some kind of push on it with some kind of a marketing rally.
One of the things we highlighted, and the fact is, is that as a public works director, for me to keep, keep the streets clean, I need to park cars off the street, you know? Don't park your cars there so I could sweep 'em. But the fact is, if there are cars parked on both sides of the road, it does slow people down because it creates a much narrower road. And that just naturally slows people down. So, it's kind of a yin and a yang for me at times where, you know, I wanna get the streets swept. But, you know, the fact is, those cars really do help in this side of it all. So...
It's a pro for parking, having people park on the streets and...
Yeah. If I could just park 'em there and then ask 'em to move so I could sweep them, put 'em back, yeah, that would be. But Huron is always gonna be a problem. Delaware's gonna be a problem. Those are very wide roads. They were designed and built that way. And around the park, you know, down there near the southwest green belt and all of that, yeah. And there's, you know, we, we probably do need to look at some alternatives through those areas.
So, if we were to initiate this, what would have to happen? You, you all would come up with a marketing plan of what would happen next. I mean, if we're not gonna lower them, then we're gonna try, we are gonna try and do something, though, right? We're not, you're not talking about just leaving it everything as it is.
Yeah, I guess that would really be up to council, what they choose to adopt and what they choose to wait and see on, you know. E-TAC isn't a marketing specialist group, per se. But, yeah, if, if there were some of the ideas on that list that you wanted to go with, you know, we'd be happy to maybe provide some suggestions as to how. I think there are people on city staff who were around when the previous program was in effect. They might be really good resources to tap for this as well.
What we could also do, too, is we could talk to Allison about it, our communications manager, and see if maybe she could join us at an E-TAC meeting for a discussion about this. Maybe with the E-TAC's input, she could maybe help us come up with some ideas to begin looking at some different, 'cause communication today, Nextdoor, you know, Tony Arnoldi's a great resource at Nextdoor. There's a lot of things we could look at to, to try to help communicate it better.
And not everybody's on Nextdoor. There's a lot of people choosing to be. Yeah, but it is one way.
We have to take every avenue we can possibly find.
No, you're right. It's a good way to get a lot of information out.
As, 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 as discussed, for example, the, the, at National Night Out, where it's a lot of neighbors getting together, it's probably these avenues that they should explore and just kinda take advantage of the, to point these things, which you, which you rightly said. And I agree with you, yeah.
One of the problems with National Night Out is it's kind of at the end of the summer when you, you want everything to slow down at the beginning when kids are all particularly busy.
Another option for, you know, a method for marketing, you know, we heard it from a few people, that it tends to be some of the people who are more sensitive to the higher speeds that are paying a little more attention to it, you know, noticing the cars going by. If you have kids, it makes you a little more hyper alert. So, another method might be to distribute something through the schools or something along those lines of a community program for slower residential speed limits might be effective.
And I know you guys have probably seen them. They've got them, I've seen, I think I saw them at Crossroads somewhere, the little kid with the flag and, you know, and I see people put those out when they know their kids are there, you know?
All right. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. Just jotting a note. Thank you, guys, for all the work that you've done on this and all the research that you looked into. And I was also really surprised to see the data and how within the limits people drive. That was surprising to me. And I was gonna address Councilmember Olson's point about perception. You know, you really, if you're standing on your street, somebody goes down at 30 miles an hour, it seems like they're going really fast. So, that's another, you know, obviously, everyone has a different perception in their street, particularly if there's kids. On my block, there's tons of kids. And on one side of the block, we have all those, you know, little kid cones or whatever. And people tend to slow down when they see those. Another question was, we have two speed trailers? Is that correct?
Yes.
Two? Yeah, I was, I was interested to learn how easy it is for folks to get one on their block, too. So, I think some kind of communication, you know, plan longer term about all these things, how to get a speed trailer on your block, how to get together with your neighbors. I really liked that community organic-based solution to this, like with Neighborhood Watch Program or the Speed Watch Program. And the Speed Watch Program, that was through specifically the police department. Is that right?
It was. It was.
Long time ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. It was another fact when, I believe Nancy Peterson was our Community Relations Officer back in the 90s. But, and I was gonna address the councilman, or the council member. I, I think that a big part of, of what you're talking about and what we're hearing about is public education. And, and that's what we do through our Community Relations Programs, is a lot of community education. And our goal with traffic enforcement always will be and always has been voluntary compliance. And so, I think that the more that we get the, the word out that this is the speed limit and that, you know, I remember when I was a fairly, well, I was a brand-new cop here back then. We had all those speed pledge things, they're all over the place. And that was Nancy Peterson. And that was pretty much a full-time job at that point for Nancy, I remember. But those types of things we can still do. And I think even more today, more than 24 years ago, it's a lot easier to get the information out there than it was then as well. So, especially using Allison Carney from our Communications Department here in the city, and then with Tony Arnoldi as well, I think we can definitely hit a, a very good education campaign, for sure.
I agree. And I think that's the best logical place to start, getting buy-in from the community. Like you mentioned, Chris, I think that's gonna be the most impactful. So, I would love to start there. And, and we should probably look at budgeting for another speed trailer or two. So, thank you, guys, for all your work.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. I agree, gentlemen. Thank you for all the research. I certainly appreciate it. I was speaking with a neighbor this weekend, and he mentioned that back in the late 80s, early 90s, there were bumper stickers that went around Inglewood that said, Inglewood is not the Indy 500. And this was just coincidental. He brought that up. And then I was going through my packet on Sunday, and this subject was on there. So, I think it is a perception deal. Most of the, 90% of the complaints I get are people from their window, what they can see directly out, that somebody's blowing through the stop sign or going too fast. And I think legitimate concerns, too. I would have expected these numbers to be higher in the 85th percentile, truth be told. I mean, you look at a lot of these and you would say people are going well under the speed limit, which, so, it might just be those outliers, the, the one guy that's flying down the block at 40, 45. I did wanna touch on the trailers as well. Are those constantly deployed or is that just at times?
You know, it's difficult for me to answer as well. I, I, we deploy them at citizens' request. I, I'm not certain, and Lead may be able to tell more about that. I don't think we deploy them on a regular basis for speed data. So, that is something that I, again, I'm not prepared to answer tonight.
Sure.
But I know that if they are underused, I think that's something we can definitely look at.
You bet.
They are used on, on, on a complaint basis, basically. If somebody called that they want to, so, police installing those. And it typically is about a three days or so or week in one direction, and they turn around. So, they do both north and south or east.
You bet. And I think it's to build on Councilmember Martinez's question I had it, too. What would trigger the deployment of one of those trailers? And so, it is just a private citizen calling the, I assume, the non-emergency number?
Calling the police department, yes.
Or us, and we will forward them to...
And it's as simple as requesting one and you can get a trailer on your block?
Yes.
All right. Not bad. Well, that's good to know. But it sounds like they're not deployed all the time, then?
No, they're not.
I think after this, if people hear, you might start getting called a lot, that you can just have them put on your block. You, Mayor, may not know offhand, well, I assume those are in data capture mode all the time. Is it clocking every car that's going past it or is that? Do you know, do you see a reduction? Day one, everybody's doing near 30, little over 30. Then a week later, it's a little under. It's, you're in your high 20s. Does it impact behavior?
It's a psychological thing because it's a, you cannot hide. If you drive, you see the speed, what you are doing, everybody knows that it's you. So, you, you see those, those, you know, brake lights initially. And then after a while, it's just gonna, you have a decrease. The same thing with the, those speed displays, which they are permanent. It's just kinda, you see initially the brake lights, and then it's just gonna, people are slowing down through those areas, too.
So, you do find it impacts behavior?
Yes.
And does bring the speed down. It's good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Putnam.
So, Councilmember Wayne, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you. E-TAC, for our E-TAC members, did you discuss any, in, in putting together the recommendations, did you discuss any length of time which you would recommend? We try some of your recommendations as a, as a start, as a, an organic way to get the citizen buy-in and the citizen advocacy first?
You know, we did not discuss any specific timelines. This time of year is probably a good time as people are spending more time outdoors and schools coming to an end would probably be a good time to start. But no, we didn't specifically discuss a timeline, per se. That wasn't necessarily within what we were looking at.
And to the comment you made earlier about the, the, what are they called? The vehicles with the...
Speed trailers.
Yes. No, not the trailers.
The photo radar, photo radar vans. Was that perception that the citizens would feel that they weren't trusted? Or was that based on some, regardless of how big or small, but was it based on some kind of data collected?
It was mostly a perception based on conversations with people. They...
So, there was some data collected?
There, there was some data collected, yeah. It, you know, the perception is basically that it's a revenue generator and that it doesn't necessarily help the speed limits, especially since a lot of the vans tend to be hidden and it's an after-the-fact type of thing. You don't know that you're speeding until all of a sudden there's a flash and you don't know if it was you that got caught necessarily. And, and so, it wasn't really good for positive behavior feedback. It was more of learn where the van parks because they don't like people driving fast on that street type of feeling. The, the speed trailers in particular, the first one that Inglewood purchased was actually from a time when we had a budget in our committee that could afford something like that. And the first speed trailer did come out of the E-TAC Committee. And the police had such great success that they purchased their own. Obviously, we don't have a budget for that this year, but just wanted to point that out to the committee as well.
It's good. Can you also, I'd say the last year, when we, when Tony Arnoldi, you guessed, she got a grant to, to purchase the speed display sign, which was installed on Zuni last year.
That was last year?
That was last year.
And it was positioned this year?
And it's, it's there, is it on Zuni, close to Baltic Place for Northbound, yeah.
Yep. I'm curious about a, an, a component, an education component regarding the, the photo radar vans as well. I see it as I see, I mean, but that's one small opinion, you know? I see it as I see a police on the... opinion, you know? I see it as I see a police on the side of the road. It's not that he doesn't trust me, but it's a safety feature. Um, and I wonder if, if, while we're thinking of education campaigns, if educating citizens as to the facts and the, the purpose behind these could help us lower and keep our, keep our citizens safer. I mean, it's not just speed and nuisance of speeding, it's people getting hit, or children and people getting injured and hurt, um, animals, dogs. So I don't know how much they cost, but if we're looking at trailers and if we're looking, as we think about the budget, I, I would like us to consider that as well.
Okay.
A photo radar van for our city.
All right. Thank you. Um, I am, I know I have two more people. I wanna kind of wrap things up. Um, so with that, Councilmember Berentine?
Um, the photo radar is challenged constitutionally because you're not, I mean, it's, it's in court. There are a lot of other issues with that. Um, Chief Vanderme at the time did not wanna do the photo radar in any of the intersections because there was overwhelming evidence at the time that it increases rear-end accidents, and that's why a lot of the communities took them out as well, because it was counterproductive, and Littleton took them out as well at their major intersections, because, and, and then financially, they had it outsourced, and it wasn't, the company wasn't even making enough money to go ahead and keep that going. So once people got used to complying and not doing it, it, then it wasn't beneficial and it couldn't be sustained. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of other ways to keep people safe than going ahead and doing something that makes them feel that it's a, a gotcha thing after the fact, um, rather than, um, and what looks to be a revenue enhancer. And certainly, I agree with Chief Vanderme at the time, to, I don't, I don't wanna have a bunch of rear-end accidents at, uh, Broadway and Bellevue because we were putting something like that up, but there was a push at that time, and I'm glad we, and I'm glad we didn't. The Broadway Indy 500 was for Broadway, and it was because people were, um, um, it's a call when they take the cars and they're just speed racing down there. We had a car wreck into a building a couple of months ago off of Shenango from people doing drag racing. They are still doing it along Broadway, but it was for Broadway, which is in places thirty miles an hour and thirty-five miles an hour as well, and that's an enforcement issue and, and very serious, and people die. I mean, we lost a couple of kids from heritage that were doing it down, um, mineral, of course, also, I think drinking, but, I mean, it's, um, it goes through the years, and I think that that's some enforcement. A lot of the problem, uh, for any kind of enforcement with photo radar or anything to, uh, most of the complaints I get about speeding are going down Broadway, and it, it issues more than they are the residential. So, um, if we could hear a little bit more from the, if you come back a little bit more from the Police Department on what they're kind of looking at for enforcement for some of those kind of issues, um, I think in a broader sense of how we're doing the Traffic Division would be instrumental.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. I, I wanted to build on what I asked before, and some have said, um, I would like to know what is, where are the hotspots besides Huron? Where could we just start deploying, deploying the speed trailers fairly regularly? It's disconcerting to me that we bought a second and they might be sitting in garages somewhere, when, when we do get complaints, which we do, and forward them on, they should just be deployed to wherever it was, and we should just keep moving them all throughout the city. If we know that they help, let's use them. And if it is a matter of, um, manpower or person power to make sure they get out there, maybe that's a piece of the budget. We need to know, we need more people to deploy these, regulate them, do whatever. Um, but I, I think it's a really great asset we have. The second thing would be, how would we find out, um, I mean, the next steps, I, I like these ideas. I think they're great ideas. I, and it's the next step to go before we would lower it. I do think people don't believe thirty miles an hour is what it is. I think they believe twenty-five miles an hour is more what they'd feel better about if they felt that all around them, but that's not what it's at. It's at thirty, and so the fact that people aren't speeding at thirty or over thirty doesn't surprise me at all, because they're being reasonable. It's just that most people would probably like it to be twenty-five or under, and that's what we're dealing with here. More than anybody speeding, it's what we feel like might be better for us. So, um, in, in lieu of having a decision on that, then how do we make sure that it stays under and that the hotspot areas are tracked? So I'm wondering, how do you track hotspot areas? If we know what the accident areas are, we, we know where the hotspots are and we can start really focusing on those? And then I think my third question would be, when people call us, I usually refer it on to the City Manager, but is there a number that you would prefer someone to call right away when there's someone speeding? Like, how do you deal with it right away?
As a call for service, frankly, and I would be calling the non-emergency line. Um, and then, you know-
And registering that there was someone speeding down my street, and then do you all keep track of those as they come in?
No, and that would be if you call the non-emergency line for dispatch, and that's going to be for, like you said, an immediate response, um, that's gonna go into our, our calls for service queue. And then a police officer would get dispatched to that area. So it's not a, a line for, um, in, information, for information gathering. However, um, you can also, uh, refer them to Sergeant McGrath, who is also the Traffic Sergeant, um, as well as being the Impact Sergeant. He's in charge of traffic as well. And so Sergeant McGrath does keep track of those, and he's the one that would, um, forward information to the traffic officers, and also, he is also the one that would make sure that the speed trailer gets deployed.
So I guess what I'm worr, I'm worrying or wondering about is, is when we do get these calls, which they do come, who's keeping track of them all so we know there's a routine here that seems to be going on in some parts that we maybe should focus on to begin with? Or is there no real way to keep that without?
I don't believe there is without an actual generating a call for service in the, in the community.
Okay, but a call for service would, would put it on the mark, on them.
It would, um, but I'm not certain that it would be the best use of resources either, because the police officer would get there-
Right, and that's a waste of their time, too.
-ten, fifteen minutes later after the car's been-
Yeah.
-gone that long. Not saying that that's not a good use of it, because in the, in the case that you brought up about the car that was the same time, the same, the same that, absolutely, we can work that. Um, but, uh, and I'm also concerned a little bit that, when we're talking about it now, how much is the speed trailer being deployed? And I can't answer the question. And I think if we have a resource like that, two of them, frankly, and it's being underutilized, then we need to take a very hard look at that.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Well, I, I would love to hear what you think. Maybe it's our staff, after this, what do you see if we say yes? Let's go with some of these. What's your next steps?
And, and, and your question regarding how this tracked, and every single time we are getting the, the phone call with the concern about the speeding, what we do first is just kinda is looking at the accidents in the, in the area. Then what we do, we need that the residents, talk to, talk to the residents, putting the, that street on, on the list when we have a few of those streets, which they are, we, we would like to, to do the speed study at the same time to get a snapshot, you know, in the area, and then again to, to talk to residents, to, to showing the results of it. And in some cases, or most of the cases, a perception. And exactly what you were saying is just that folks are thinking that thirty or twenty-eight, or twenty-seven, twenty is too fast. And this is what Chris was talking about. This is the, how we will change the, the, the behavior, how, how we will change the thinking. Okay, so if I'm in a residential area, I will not go forty-five. It's just fine speed, but how we will get there, it's just kinda, this is the, the thing. And I truly believe that if, that the changing to behavior, changing the thinking, it's a, it's a long, uh, impact, a long-time impact. If you do something with the physical, it's just gonna spot here, 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 and then it's just gonna goes. So it, it goes both ways, you know, this way.
It's one of the things the signs like that are on Dartmouth and at, you know, Quincy right before Navajo.
Right.
I think part of that is not-
The microphone?
Thank you for microphones. Um, part of that is-
Too dare, we really do.
Yeah. Part of that, though, is that it just makes people realize when they are going a little too fast, it flashes out and says, "You're going fast." You may not even realize it, maybe you're on the phone or listening to the radio, whatever, slightly distracted. And I think those types of things do help, which is the speed trailer, but the permanent signs, maybe if there's hot areas like that, maybe we come back to you and talk to you about getting some more of those installed in some of the spots that are, you know, around the parks and stuff, but nothing else, just to get a greater educational piece. And, and, Chris, we can, we can have some further discussion and maybe we get some budget numbers, and we could come back to you with that.
That's great. Thank you.
And then I just, I have, um, three quick questions. Really, how many signs are out there in residential areas? I mean, I know there are on the main thoroughfares, but how many signs are in the residential areas?
At, at this moment, I really don't have, uh, it's, it's a, it's a bunch. It's, it's a lot. And, uh, but I really don't know exactly how many.
Okay. I mean, that would be a question that I would like to know, because if there, I mean, I have had, uh, a citizen come and say there's no signs in their residential area. I don't remember seeing any in my residential area, and so that, if there are not that many signs, just posting the major thoroughfares and changing the speed limit of the residence, uh, residential areas citywide, um, perhaps wouldn't cost that much if we don't have to put new signs up. I mean, that's, that's one question. The speed trailer, um, I don't know, it's probably been over a year ago. It was sitting on Dartmouth for a while, but half the time it wasn't working because obviously the battery wasn't charged. It, it has a solar charger, correct, and when you drive down the street, it was dead. But it had been three or four cloudy days, so, um, I don't know if that makes a difference. And then the one other piece about the communication, and I'm finding this in some of the liaison, uh, some of the boards that I'm on, is one of the greatest resources we have for communication, the boards aren't aware of the deadlines for the magazine, because the magazine goes into every single household. And so now we're up to summer and the deadline probably is sometime this week.
It's actually last week.
It was actually last week. Okay. So, um, I think it's maybe important that we make sure that that information gets out to, uh, boards and commissions, um, so that we can utilize that resource in communicating, uh, with the neighborhoods, uh, and with about anything. So I wanna thank you all for the time you spent in the study and for bringing this forward, and I just greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm wondering if we should take a break since we're running late. Um, does everybody wanna take a break, or do you wanna wait? Uh, let's start with the budget?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with the budget and then we'll-
Oh, well, how about, yeah.
Okay.
Take a break.
You didn't speak up.
I did.
Okay.
I like my entrance.
All right. Uh, five minutes.
I'm gonna do that one and not sit still while you're talking.
Does that one?
It's definitely right now. We need training for us to be a better man.
So, um, we'll just show an error that we couldn't make.
Yeah, it somehow doesn't even like her emails.
I just wanna see, as far as the house were invested, I don't know, maybe she got-
Okay, so, and we do-
Same.
Okay.
And so, when we do the inspection, Marshall, there's things, because the work in the body is just as, and it sure has to be based on policy, but it doesn't have to be people who makes them, or who else.
When I talk about the rainbow, oh, since this is the first call.
And then, I also, we got the initial draft, like, the survey results, uh, so I was-
In a way, that's huge people, maybe, it's our own.
Okay, sorry. Yes. Okay. So, are we looking at two-thirty tomorrow, or this is?
Um, yeah, that's the time to say.
Okay. Um, yeah, generally, I think, I think that's one. Okay. I'll check on my schedule. I put before the-
Sure. Yeah, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Now I have to remember that I changed it.
Yeah, you know, it was.
Took your days off last week.
There's a lot of unreality.
Do I have to go back to the other one? All right.
We're so extreme, and you're trying, okay? Because that's never gonna happen. And it's like, I mean, do you think? I, I think you could never pull that off.
My younger, youngest daughter, she graduated nursing school.
Yeah, I don't know. I think it's, I think that's sort of true.
I think you log in, look, look, I'll look at.
Well, if you, you know, we're just trying to say, well, we're just trying to make sure.
It's crazy. You don't want to have that.
Ah, I think we're getting policy tonight?
No, no, we're pretty far behind.
Yeah.
And you know how the budget, it's not gonna-
And I don't think that's gonna be a quick conversation.
No.
Good custom.
I feel like that's the home project that I never get done.
I know.
Say every weekend I'm gonna do.
It stays on the honey-do list for, yeah.
Subliminally, maybe it's the one I don't wanna do. Like, there's a reason, there's a reason I'm thinking we're just never getting around to it.
Right.
Hi, I know.
I was thinking about you this morning. It's going to happen sometime.
Thank you.
I should give them this extra speaker for them to present with the budget.
Oh, because we can use this. Okay, all right, perfect. Okay, our next agenda item is item 3A, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Process Discussion. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel and Revenue and Budget Manager Jennifer Nolan and our Assistant City Manager Mark Wolfe are here to discuss the fiscal year 2019 budget process. Welcome.
Good evening.
It's good to see you, finally. Getting started.
Finally. Well, we're here tonight to officially kick off the 2019 budget process with you. Staff has been working behind the scenes for the last couple of months on programs and capital. You've seen some of that work already. And now we're going to look at the revenues, expenses, and go forward from there. So we're going to take a look at the forecast we've developed based on the most current economic indicators, and those we'll hopefully update again before we get to the final version. But this gives us a place to start. We'd also like to understand what you'd like to see, what your direction will be on the budget based on what we present tonight, and also what you'd like to tee up some policy issues that we see coming forward with some of this. I know, right? You're going to have an echo here in a minute. So, and then we also have community engagement that we've put into our schedule at this point, but would also like to understand what that means to you and how you would like to see us proceed in that, in that manner. So what you see in front of you right now is the 2019 budget calendar. We thought we'd start with that. We have the, starting tonight, with the budget assumptions and the five-year forecast. In April and May, we're looking at council workshops on the philosophy of operations, capital, and personnel. We may not need all the sessions that we've got scheduled at this point, but we'll go forward with those. In May and June, we'll take a look at the budget goal areas and presentations on those. That's a little sooner than you saw that last year. Last year it was a little later in the summer. June and July, we're looking at the community engagement activities, if you'd like to go forward with those. August, we've kind of left open at this point. Depending on what your needs are and what you'd like to see, we'll schedule something in there. And then we start the preliminary budget book to you on September 7th. It's really not due to you until the 15th per charter, but with the schedule and trying to get through the second reading by the middle of October, we moved it forward so that we could get that accomplished. 17th will be the public hearing. October 1st, we've got the first reading, and we follow up two weeks later with the second reading. And then December 15th, we're required to have our mill levies on file with Arapaho County.
If I just might add really quick, one thing we'll be asking tonight, either during this presentation or later, we can cover it at the end of the meeting, is we have a box set aside in the Citizen Magazine, again, just like we did with these last workshops for the budget workshops. So we'll be asking about potential dates for that. We've targeted a couple of weeks in July, just based on some other events going on. We can, we can talk through that. Also, we've, we've set some time aside in August. You'll notice August is bare right now. Basically, we have that time set aside in case we need more detailed presentations on maybe some policy items that come up, maybe there's some larger discussions. Those sessions that we had in August last year, I, I think generally the council felt that we needed a little bit more time since it was heavy on those policy discussions. So we'll be trying to tee those up in, in May and June so that we have some time to discuss. But if necessary, we do still have some time in August if we need it.
Okay. All right. For Councilmember Questa and Councilmember Wink certification, just wanted to give you a high-level view of the charter authorization and process for the budget. As Kathy mentioned, the submission of the budget is required to be in your hands by September 15th. And then within three weeks of you receiving the budget, a public hearing should be held. Certification of the mill levy to Arapaho County is due by December 15th. And no later than December 2nd, we, we have to have a budget adopted for the foregoing year, or for the following year, I should say. This next slide, again, is just a listing of our eight Englewood community goals, and tonight's budget discussion ties in with the good governance goal that we have. And when we were working with the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting in developing our goals and the whole priority-based budgeting methodology, one of the major principles is fiscal health and wellness. And the five components of fiscal health and wellness are to incorporate economic analysis and a long-term planning into our decision-making. And it's my understanding that you all are embarking on developing a strategic plan, so that, that exercise will touch on that nicely. To be transparent about the true cost of doing business, and we address this in part by allocating our budget costs to the various programs that the city provides. And also, you have another opportunity through the line items detail through Open Englewood to also see where our costs are being spent. The third component of fiscal health and wellness is understanding the variance, and through the monthly review of, of the budget with Kathy, you're able to see where our revenues and our expenditures align with our budget for the, for the given year. And just as, as we, as you all know, the budget is a financial tool that helps us control our costs during the year. So we'd like to touch base on that. And then in, in 2016, as part of adopting our financial policies, we established a reserve policy for the general fund of 16.7%. So we've accomplished this component of our fiscal health and wellness, and we also try to make sure that we're in alignment with that requirement as well. And as you all know, the reserves basically serve as a, as a rainy day fund in the event that the, the economy were to take a downturn. So it gives a little opportunity in the short term to kind of weather that downturn. And then the last component of the fiscal health and wellness is, and I think it's our overarching goal, is spending within our means. And so when, when we're looking at our fiscal health and wellness, we're always keeping that in mind, is, you know, we can only spend what we take in. So the next few slides, we're going to be talking about our revenue forecast as it pertains to the general fund. The general fund, as you, as you know, has the majority of the city departments or the city services that are supported by the general taxes of the city. And this pie chart provides you a, a five-year average from 2013 through 2017 of our total revenue sources, and the major categories are provided. I just wanted to note that sales, sales and use tax take, or accounts for 59% of our total revenue sources. But what's also very telling is the majority of our sales and use tax is derived from outside city sales, or 18% of our total revenue sources. And the next, or, and I just also wanted to let you know that in the appendix, the support data for this graph, I believe is on slide number five. The next slide, which is our revenue forecast for the general fund, the support documentation, again, here is on slide four of our appendix. We're breaking this down into three major categories: sales and use tax, property tax, and all other revenue sources. And the next slides that I'll, I'll go on will give you the assumptions for these, but we're basically building in a very conservative estimate for all, all three of these general areas. And just as a reminder, the last eight and a half years, it has been our third-largest period of economic growth within, for the past hundred years. So even though the good times are rolling, we have to be aware that it's possible that we could have an economic downturn. But if that were to occur, we'll revisit our forecast with you at that, at that time.
Can I ask a question about the property tax? Why does it go up and down?
I'll, I'll go over that in, in a few minutes, but the, the main reason is even though property taxes increase, or the property valuation increases, we have what's called the residential assessment rate, which brings, which translates our property values to an assessed valuation. And, and also, we have what is called the Gallagher Amendment. And the Gallagher Amendment wants to make sure that 45, to 45% is residential property tax and 55% is commercial property tax, or all other property tax. So that resident, residential assessment rate gets adjusted down to maintain that 45, 55% ratio, Gallagher ratio. So we're anticipating in 2019, even though property taxes will increase, we're anticipating that residential assessment weight, rate will decrease to try to keep that property tax mill levy relatively flat.
Okay, so you, it does stay stable for two years because they do assessments every...
They do assessments every, every other year. In the, in the between years, they will adjust for any new constructions that's, construction projects that are going on in the area. So those will be a little minor adjustments.
Okay.
Between the assessment years. All right, thank you.
I would like to point out that it is fairly stable, though. You're talking about maybe $100,000, from four to 3.9 to four. It's pretty stable.
Okay.
But the previous Gallagher adjustment hadn't been done, when was the previous Gallagher adjustment done, like 10 years, 15 years ago?
Yeah.
So to, to put that in as if that's a real player in any one of these years is really not it. And even when they did the adjustment, it came up fairly...
Right, it went from 7.96 down to 7.2.
Came up fairly even, I mean, basically from what the scare was of it. But they don't do that. The legislature doesn't do that very often, so...
Yeah, every two years, they'll, they'll look, they'll do that calculation, just to make sure they'll decide whether or not, rarely does it go up, but it will definitely ratchet down.
They've never, I mean, they didn't do it for all that period of time. Now, I don't mind, because of the way the property values are going up, we're more than likely going to have additional funding, and it would be way better to be conservative. But I'm just confused on why it's being put into that formula like that, but that's okay.
It was, it, it's just information we received from the Colorado Legislative Council report back in December, and they're anticipating that residential assessment rate to drop from 7.2, which it currently is, down to the 6.11. And again, it may or may not be that number when, when 2019 rolls around.
But it's just a plan, tool for us, correct?
Okay, just, just for us to be aware that it could be adjusted.
Well, it's more conservative than what it would be, so I'm happy with that.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for the question. So the next slide provides our forecast, and we're basically looking at the Consumer Price Index as, as well as the Colorado retail sales. And again, we're being pretty conservative at 2% for our forecast for, and 2019 is also a 2% increase. When I was looking at our 2018 estimate, I was coming in about 28.2 million. So, but here is the budget amount of 27.9 million, so it looks like it's going down. But that's just a budgeted number that we derived at a point in time last year. So I think that's all I have to say on that. And then speaking to our property tax, this chart provides you the appraisal period, and you're going to notice that it's about a two-and-a-half-year lag by the time we get that assessment for, for the, the current year. So when we have the assessment in 2019, that period of time is going to be from July 1st of 2016 through June 30th of 2018, which will incorporate this last bit of growth that we've been seeing. Again, from that Colorado Council, Colorado Legislative Council report, they're looking at, they've indicated that the property values are stabilizing right now, so we'll probably not see much of an increase in future appraisal years unless we have just, you know, continued tremendous growth. Just wanted to let you know on the annual increase, it shows that it's a 3% in 2018, 2017, collected in 2018. Our actual increase that we noted from our 2017 unaudited property tax information to our budget is 18.5% increase. So we still are, we're still feeling the benefit of the property tax or the, the market value increase. However, it's, you know, property tax is, is only 7% of our overall revenue piece of the pie, and so it may increase by 100,000 or two, you know, 200,000 here or there, but it won't be changing dramatically. And then I also wanted to show you the, under the property assessed valuation, I'm estimating the change between 2018 appraisal year to 2019 of a 12.5% increase. So I'm showing, property values have increased about 10 to 15%. I'm being conservative at the 12.5% increase. And then I'm applying the, the residential assessment rate of 6.11. Again, just being conservative on our revenue numbers. And then the next slide just shows you the composition of the property tax. Again, other property tax owners pay about 1.5 times more than residents. So just wanting to show you that we collect about 1.5 million this year from residents and about 2.4 million from all other property owners. And again, that's that Gallagher Amendment, and other property owners has a, have a 29% assessment rate compared to our 7.2 current residential assessment rate. rate compared to our 7.2 current residential assessment rate. Next slide is our all other revenue sources. And this slide, the support documentation can be found on slide four of the appendix. And that's the slide that has three highlights, or three rows highlighted, one for property tax, one for sales tax, and one for all other. So, you can see the composition of that 15.5 million. And again, here, we're anticipating just a flat 2% increase overall, year-over-year. Now, we'll talk about our general fund expenditure forecast. This pie chart, again, provides you a five-year average from 2013 to 2017 of where we're spending our general fund dollars that we've received. The majority of our funds support the police services area. Even though the city manager's office shows 19.2%, what's also included in the city manager's office is the Denver Fire Contract. And the Denver Fire Contract total is 16% of total general fund expenditures. And then, parks, wrecks, and libraries, about another 16%, so they're almost equally weighted. And then, the forecast that we're using for the general fund is, just wanted to let you know, where it says the CPI, the second chart down below, for 2017 and 2018, we're showing what actually has happened, the year-over-year expense. So, between 2016 and 2017, expenditures increased 2.6%. Between 2017 unaudited numbers and the 2018, it's showing an 8%. And actually, we underspent in 2017, because we did build in a 5% increase, 2017 versus 2018, year-over-year budget number. So, we did build in a 5% increase in expenditures, but we did underrun in 2017 about 3%. So, that's where we're getting our 8%. And then, the CPI index for Denver Aurora Lakewood, it ended the year in 2017 at 3.4%, anticipating 2018 at 2.9%, 2019 at 2.8, and 2020 at 2.6. So, we're averaging ours at a flat 3%. Just going to keep the numbers simple. And with that, I think Kathy will take over, and she's going to start, or speak to us about the general fund, fund balance.
So, we'll start with this chart. Now, I know you've seen a similar chart before. The composition of this chart, when the bars are the unassigned fund balance at the top, then the later fund is the bluish gray, and the table reserve that we are required to hold is the kind of orange color at the bottom. So, as you can see, as those bars go along, the unassigned fund balance becomes less and less, until you get to 2021, where it's a sliver. And then, in 2022 and 23, we start really, we eat into that, and that's what covers some of our expenses. So, when you look at the fund balance line, which is the dark green one at the top, that kind of curves downward, of course, the two of them curve downward, the green line is reflecting the fund balance. Now, although the later fund is covering over on 22 and 23, we end up actually eating into it, because we have to cover the portion of expenses that there's no more unassigned fund balance to cover. And that's why that gold dips down below the zero line. The dotted line going straight across the chart is the reserve policy limit, the 16.7% going across those years, as to where we're supposed to keep the fund balance.
I think, just to add one point on this chart, is, what's important is not just where that reserve policy line crosses, the reserve line out in 2023, but what's important is that you start to see that gold bar, the unassigned fund balance, decrease almost immediately. So, what that means is that we have to utilize the unassigned fund balance for operations of the city. And so, that's where we'll get into some of these policy discussions, is that whether we're talking about later and the use later, or unassigned fund balance, or future revenue sources, is that we don't, we don't want to have to dip in to unassigned fund balance in order to support operations. And you can see in 2022, what that's showing is that we actually don't have funds, that unassigned fund balance doesn't exist. That's not existing funds that we're utilizing. We'd have to take that out of either later, out of that later fund in order to cover general operations as we're projecting out in 2022. So, I just wanted to make that point there, that as soon as you see that gold bar decreasing, then we're having to pull out of our unassigned fund balance without future revenue.
So, is that because we are increasing the amount that we need to cover expenditures, I mean, in the budget, we're increasing it? And so, why are we having to eat into the unassigned fund balance?
So, our revenues, as you saw on the other charts that Jenny was showing, is only, we've only forecasted a 2% increase. On the expenditures, we're forecasting a 3% increase. So, the expenditures start outweighing the actual revenues coming in. Again, a conservative forecast. But what is also happening here is, we're continuing to put about 1.5 million into the later fund from the EMERF rents, rather than moving it into the general fund where we could actually put it into the unassigned fund balance and keep that.
Or, another solution is to figure out how to cut expenses.
Right. If you cut, let's say you cut expenses 3%, you're only cutting a million and a half out of the budget, though. This is a little bigger than that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, what I'd like to point out on this chart, we've got our beginning fund balance, ending fund balance, and as it goes through the different years, and what the target is, or where we end up with the reserve policy target. But what I'd like to really point out is the orange-colored bar at the bottom. This is the amount of reserve that we've got above the target that's available to us at this point, and how it changes over year-over-year.
And is it the reserve policy, our policy states that we will keep 16.7%?
7% of the revenue that we, our revenue cost, our revenue budget. So, I'm talking about capital funds. Where I'd like to start is the sources and the appropriations. Now, the, I'm going to start with 15, because it looks to be, I guess it's got all the components I want to speak to in it. 15, the purple bar at the bottom, is what we appropriated for the capital budget. Now, when I say capital budget, it's the Public Improvement Fund and what we call our Capital Projects Fund combined, okay? Those are all the capital efforts we've got going. The gold bar that's solid is the actual funding sources that come in, and we'll talk about those components in the next slide. The little dotted line is the infusion that we had from general fund and some other sources that increased the amount available to us. Now, notice that the appropriations in 15 is quite a bit lower than the actual amount of money that was available to us. Where the reason that was, is because when we forecasted the 2015 budget, we didn't know exactly how well we would do in that area, and so, the revenues came in higher. Now, you go to 16, where you've got the appropriations bar far above the actual money available to us. And that's where we said, okay, we didn't appropriate it in 15, but we've got it, we carried it over, and we said we're appropriating it in 16. So, that's kind of how this works from one end to the other. When you get over to 18, we have what we appropriated, and then we also had some additional unfunded needs. Now, these were the needs that Eric talked to you at the council study session on the 5th of March. And then, as we go forward in the five-year forecast, it was included in that presentation, we're showing those needs as well. You can see that they're far above the gold line, and I'm going to focus on the solid gold line. Notice that the funding sources that we're getting kind of hover above the 4 million mark. They're not getting bigger, but our needs are getting bigger.
And I think, just to piggyback on that point, the solid gold line is a use tax, essentially, and Kathy will go through that on the next slide. So, we're projecting, but it's not, you know, something that we necessarily can count on increasing forever. It'll stay fairly flat, and you'll notice that over the trend line, and it stays around $4 million. That dotted line and anything into the future is just general fund money. So, it's anything that is unassigned fund balance, anything extra that comes in that may or may not be there. And that's what we're using to try to address the unfunded capital need. And these unfunded needs, as Eric articulated a few weeks ago, they're critical infrastructure. We're not talking about pie in the sky, wish list type of, type of projects. They are, as outlined in our five-year capital improvement plan, identified as existing, taking care of our existing infrastructure. So, you know, that's not fully funding a Parks and Rec master plan, that's not fully funding some of the other building projects that may be on the horizon or need a refresh of. That's talking about roof of this building, that's talking about roads and bridges and that type of thing.
Can I ask a question, then? In our policy discussion, there are things that we have set in motion that are adding costs to the budget of the city, like the Parks and Rec master plan has things in it that are going to take money. The comprehensive plan has things in it that are going to take money. And so, perhaps it's possible in the policy discussion that we're going to have to reevaluate some of those things in order to cover the necessities that we have?
Yeah, absolutely. I think one of the, one of the major policy items is how you'll proceed with prioritization of capital projects in general. Because you can't, even if you do talk about revenue streams in the future, you're still not going to hit $220 million of unfunded requests over 20 years. So, it's just a matter of looking at those priorities, and this comes right back to your strategic plan process in determining what the community needs and priorities are, and trying to translate those into the budget process.
We also made a shift from 2015 to 2016, the way that we do general fund and unassigned, between Frank Wiggeritz and the change in the way we did everything. Is that what 2015 is showing, too?
I'm not sure, because our reserve policy didn't come into place until 2016.
Right. We used to go by 8%, 9% at the time.
Yep, yep, yep. So, that would be the general fund, and this is the Public Improvement Fund and Capital Projects Fund, so, yes, we were able to probably transfer more money in 2015.
Right.
And, yep, I think that...
I just wanted to be sure that I was reading this correctly.
I'm with you now, yes.
There is a little history here.
Yes, yes, I'm with you. Yes, we were able to transfer more if our reserve policy was in place. At that time, it would be, we wouldn't have been able to transfer in as much as we did. You're correct.
So, you're saying that you started in 2016, reserving more, and that allowed you to transfer more in?
No, no, well, in 20, when we get, when we get to the next slide, Kathy will show that we had some transfers from the general fund into the Public Improvement Capital Projects Fund.
And not as a result of your reserve?
Oh, no, 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 no. But we had, but we had extra money in the general fund to transfer.
So, in 2015, when the reserve policy was like 9%?
Between the, between a policy and who was the CFO into how that generated more money?
I don't think it had anything to do with the CFO, but...
No, just the timing of it.
In 2015, we were only reserving 9%, 9% to 10%. And so, when our fund balance went up above that, we were able to transfer more in. Now, we're reserving almost twice that, and so, we don't have as much wiggle room to transfer in. Does that make sense?
It was a little higher than that, around 12, but, okay. I see what, I see what kind of...
Slotted things a bit there.
That's not...
I had nothing to do with it. So, I would...
But that's, that's why we were able to transfer more in in 2015 than we would in 2016, because we didn't have a reserve, 16.7 reserve policy in place. We had around a 10%, 8% to 10%. It kind of fluctuated.
And that'll be more clear on the next slide also.
Yeah, you'll be able to see the dollar amount.
So, we'll go to the detail here. So, in this detail, for the different years, we just went through 18 on this one. You've got the vehicle use tax, the building use tax, the road and bridge, intergovernmental are grants, and then we have some other, which is interests and miscellaneous. And so, all of those is what we have to build into the regular revenue stream for this area. In addition to that, we have other financing sources, so we transfer in from the general fund, either into the Public Improvement Fund or the Capital Projects Fund. And this year, in 17, we also had the transfer from ERA. And then, in 18, we've got the transfer from the Housing Rehabilitation Fund, because there were some funds that they could release that were, that were, I'm not going to say not needed, but above the policy that they needed to retain based on their criteria. So, you can see how that all adds into the numbers that we've put into the chart. Now, we'll talk a little bit about the debt service. And the reason we want to talk about this is because of the change that you can see on the graph dramatically from 23 to 24. So, the bottom blue, kind of grayish lines are the Parks and Rec GOB that we issued back in 2001. It's coming to an end. You can see, this is the month, excuse me, annual outlay of cash that we have to pay that general obligation bond down. So, you can see from the Parks and Rec, it's about $1 million one each year at this point. The orange bar in the middle, which becomes the only bar from '24 out, is the police building, the general obligation bond on that, and how much we pay each year on that. And then, the gold bar is the COP for the Civic Center. Now, that also goes away in 2023, the end of 2023, it's done. So, those, the funding source for the COP comes out of general fund, that just releases $1 million four a year that we're paying now back into general fund, where we can use it for other things.
I think one of the points on this slide is that, if you just look out on the horizon, and again, we had this discussion a few weeks ago, five years may not, may seem like it's way out there on the horizon, but when you're talking about talking with the community about some of these opportunities, looking at this site in particular with the expiration of the COPs, looking at the Parks and Rec support, you know, I think having that be a part of your discussions going forward is really important. I'll note on the Civic Center that the participation doesn't preclude us from looking at other opportunities sooner than that either. So, it's not just that because you have those colors in 20, up until through 2023, doesn't mean that you can't have these discussions now and get a sense of where the community's at. So, I think, you know, overall, in comparing us with other cities, that we're in a really good place with our debt service, a very healthy place. So, it provides us that flexibility to at least have those larger discussions.
It's actually pretty amazing.
Yeah, it is.
And what's nice about the general obligation bonds that go away, if we had a need, and we put it in front of the voters, again, for that same amount, they're not paying any additional, they're just keeping the same payment they've got going, and we would have additional money to do what we needed to. So, it's a thought.
Actually, and this is just a thought also, about cash financing things rather than paying interest on that money for a long period of time. I mean, I think that's something we ought to look at, too. And I know you can get a big pile and do a bunch of stuff, but there is a cost to that also, and so, I think there are other things that we could look at also.
There's some different schools of thought on that. Some municipalities and other government agencies prefer the funding method, because then the people who are using it are paying for the use as they go along, versus all the people who are there now pay 100%, and then everybody else gets to feed off of it later. So, there's some different philosophies in place for different units.
And it certainly depends on the scope of the project. I think absolutely cash financing makes sense for certain projects. I think there are some examples in looking at our needs for some of the smaller projects, given the surplus from 2017, that we thought, okay, instead of pulling in those items as a part of a larger discussion as to what the community might want in the future, to say, this is an opportunity, given our reserves, to perhaps cash finance a smaller project. So, absolutely, that's a part of the policy discussion.
So, will you, when we get to that point, will you be able to suggest some of the projects that could be cashed, that we haven't considered before, a little bit more reasonably than others? Because I agree with you that it's fine for my household to be debt-free, and just because I have to pay for it over time, I'm not putting the burden on anybody else but me and my kids if they want to sell it someday, but it's not the same for cities with the fluctuation and the way in which things work within people coming and going, and not using some services and using others. Will you have, could you give us some, some ideas of where you think some of these things would fall, from what you're seeing in best practices from around... from what you're seeing in best practices from around maybe the state of Colorado because the economy is similar?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that was mostly what, what Manager Keck was speaking to a few weeks ago, highlighting four projects that, that we felt were right for, for the application of the surplus. I think another part of that discussion, and we outline it in a future slide, is, is the use of premium. Again, not for general projects, but directly related to, to safety services. So those are the two, if you're talking about what are your opportunities in the, in the short term for cash financing perhaps, those are, those are the two.
At the very tail end of the appendix, we did include Manager Keck's presentation again with the details. So if you wanted to look at that, you could see that.
And, and in that chart, the, the highlighted items are the ones that, that we identify for potential funding.
Right.
Thanks for that, Michael.
Councilmember Berentine?
The similarities in private or government going into debt is that it still costs interest. Somebody else is making money off of that. And that's huge to put that additional burden in that doesn't do anything, isn't produced, isn't a building, isn't an asset. It's just going to pain something. Whereas if you use a cash option, while that cash is sitting there, you're the ones who are collecting the interest. I mean, there is a benefit to having that money there and making sure that you're planning ahead of time. I think what I'm hearing you say is that you're interested in like the Parks and Rec wants that, what the taxpayers agreed to pay, that making an argument that they just keep paying the tax because they're used to paying it already, that somehow that makes a, makes it not new, new tax. But it would be, I mean, because they paid for that for a specific purpose.
It would be for something different, but it from a standpoint...
So the only two, the two here at the police and parks and rec were already approved by, by voters and being paid by voters, and they understood what they're doing. The only one that was unfunded and is costing us is where we went into debt with the certificate of participation. And that, that wasn't approved by the voters, and that's just money that was forced down through this vehicle. So I just wanted to make that clear that that's what you were doing. But I, I, I disagree with Councilmember Olson in that it's not a, I don't think it's any better or financially wise for individuals to go into debt as it, than it is for a government entity to go into debt because you're obligating future people to pay off the bill. And what is the police department going to cost us for that $27 million, 60 something? That we're going to pay back 49 million? So it's almost double of what we've got in there, and it's not doubling up what we're being able to do. And it goes out until, geez, 2036, there's to be paying that thing off. And I'm not sure, we'll see how long, hopefully the building is well constructed and lasts, and you never know what's going to happen. So I would like to see some more opportunities to explore some planning and what we're going to do in having that money put aside and, and earning us some interest and making little money babies off of it. And then by the time that, that we're ready to do something, that we've got a little better space instead of putting future citizens into, into debt. So maybe we can take a little bit of a look at some of that. I know you said that some of them would be reasonable to do, but I think more of them would be reasonable to do. So if you can take a look at that.
Well, I think that'll be a discussion, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And to make it clear that, and if we were to go out for another bond, the voters have to approve it, so it would be up to them.
Right, okay, thank you.
Now you're not talking about swapping.
I hope we've learned our lesson on doing certificate of participation at least, so everybody gets...
All right, let's go ahead.
Okay. Talk a little bit about the enterprise funds. I just want to touch on these lightly. This chart shows you that where our beginning fund balance is, what we're expecting to come in as sources and how we're going to use them in 18 and what our ending balance is. All of the balances are looking pretty healthy. The one that we're keeping an eye on is the sewer fund. That's a little bit tighter than we'd like to see it. And we'll be doing a cost study on that and bringing it forward in the next few weeks for you to all review and see how you want to go forward with that. We do expect to get additional funding in from the biogas project, but that won't be until 19.
So can I ask, is the reason that it drops down to $845,000 is because of the $4 million that we are going to spend on the...
That's the biggest part. You'll see the sources up here at 16, the uses at 21. Most of that is the biogas project.
Okay, thank you.
Now we'd like to talk about opportunities and some policy decisions here, or options, I should say.
Yes, we don't expect you to decide on all of these items tonight.
No, lots of thought for tonight though, for sure. Some of these opportunities you've, you've seen before and the threats as well, at least on the general fund. We brought some of these forward last time. Development in the area is an opportunity, brings in some more sales tax revenue and use tax. Jobs, if we get more people to move into the area, we've got jobs for them, then we generate some more sales tax that way. We could increase the sales or use tax rate, that's an option. We could increase the property tax rate, that's another option. Use tax compliance, we'd like to talk to you a little bit more in depth at a futures study session. But at this point in time, what we'd like to share is that when we go out to audit some of the companies that are out in Inglewood, they're always surprised that they owe use tax. They didn't think they owed tax at all because they were a service or a manufacturing company. And so we're finding we're surprising a lot of them. We'd like to use this as an opportunity to educate them more and get them more on a regular schedule of looking at what they do owe the city per our, our laws. So we've been bringing up a proposal forward shortly on that one. And then we also would like to revisit the employee employer occupational tax. Now this is a small tax that each employee has to pay to work in the city. And a lot of cities have this, it's probably 50/50 across the cities in the area. We'll bring some more detail together for you on a future study session of that as well. But these are the folks that are using our amenities, our roads, our bridges, our parks, and yet they don't have, they don't contribute to any of that. So this is what the occupational tax does, is helps share the load on, for what the use is. Some of the threats that we have, we've got this outside city sales tax. Right now there's a sales, sales simplification, use tax, sales and use tax, I'll get it. Sales and use tax simplification task force that's at the state level. Jenny's participating on this. And at this point in time, they're trying to pull everything in so the, the state would collect it and then distribute out the pieces that belong to the local communities. What we're seeing, there could be pluses and minuses. We haven't seen the details yet, so we're kind of keeping our eyes on this one. They've got an RFI out on the street. They put it out on March 16th to look at a system that would collect all this information and distribute. So they're moving forward on that one. The online sales, that's some of our threats. Right now, we've got some, some income that comes in from Amazon. Some other major players like Walmart who sells online, we get some from them. But we have some opportunities like Craigslist and Nextdoor and some of the other ways that people trade and buy secondhand type items, used tires, whatever. My husband just sold some, so I know about that. Bartering garage sales. When people are trading things that way or buying things at a discount, we're not seeing that. That doesn't run through any of our systems, so we're losing sales tax there as well. Federal Reserve interest rates, they're looking at raising them three times this year. And that could have an impact on the economy. It could slow the economy down, we don't know, but it could be a threat. Capital funding, here's where we're talking about some of the opportunities. We've got additional GOB request when the Parks and Rec GOB expires, that's an opportunity. Allocating a portion of the general fund balance over the reserve policy to capital projects could be an opportunity. The premium for the police headquarters building, this one could cover safety services capital needs. That's right in the ballot language, so we do have that as, as an option. And we could request two mills of public improvement mill levy specifically for capital, and that's a charter option. That would bring in about 1.5, no, 1 million, 2 millions, two mills. And then we could do an additional GOB request that would just be on top of everything else that we have right now because we're nowhere near our current limit for, for borrowing. The threats, we've got the public improvement fund sources of revenues aren't keeping pace with the maintenance. We're fairly flat year over year, you saw that in the chart, and yet our needs are great. Taxpayer funds are kept in general fund above the reserve policy, aren't being well-used. We could use them. The general fund maintenance costs, they continue to rise as we continue to keep trying to maintain and patch things. And so the cost of patching them gets more and more year over year. And if you don't repair them, then the deferred maintenance can lead to higher costs to do the big fix later. So if you pay $10,000 today, tomorrow it might cost you 15,000 because it's in further disrepair. And then we've got the cost to maintain is increasing more than the interest that we're earning on the money sitting in the bank. So those we think are the threats.
And I'll just add, I, obviously, we don't think you should explore or move forward on all of these. We're merely kind of pointing out the different mechanisms that, that are available. I think bottom line is that you have to plan for any of these items well in advance, especially since all of these items but for the, the premium and surplus discussion require voter approval. So you're talking about 2019 already, and so, you know, what does that look like? How does that relate to your strategic plan discussions? I think what, what we'd like to do, if nothing else, Manager Keck has set aside several meetings in the next couple of months, set aside some time on study sessions for these type of discussions so that if there is any appetite for learning more information about any of the items that Director Wrinkle brought up or any of these other opportunities that we've outlined, that we're able to prepare additional information for you, that you're able to study it and have some thoughtful discussion behind it in coordination with your strategic plan and well before we get into the throes of a, of a 2019 budget proposal. And that'll also help us with understanding any of the assumptions we may need to adjust. So I think that's ideally what we would like to utilize those, those next few sessions around budget on is getting a sense of what you'd like to learn a little bit more about and discuss further.
Another thing I'd like to point out is you can only make a Tabor change or put something on the ballot for Tabor on the odd years. So if we miss 19, our next opportunity is way out in 21. Any questions, comments? That's kind of the end of the presentation we had. Lots of supporting documentation in the appendix if you have any desire to look at that.
Councilmember Olson?
Back upset just your last statement about the timing at 2019 to be anything that we did put on ballot for Tabor reasons. So when you back it up from, from that point, at what point do we have to make a decision if we're going to go for special funding?
Now, the police building was a little rushed.
We did that pretty quickly.
But we got it in.
Yeah.
And I think we really worked on that one starting in May.
There was research.
So we were able to get something on the ballot as soon as, starting in May.
Let's assume we're not, we don't rush into something. What, what do you think are the normal timeframes for different kinds of funding?
Well, I mean, certainly well in advance of discussing the 2020 budget, you'd, you'd want to be having that discussion and, and make sure that the community was well aware of it. I, I mean, I think that for something like, whether it's looking at reauthorizing Parks and Rec or whether it's looking at another type of bond, that the community with the conversation happens well in advance of anything coming to council for approval for, for the, for the ballot. So, you know, I think you have these discussions as a part of your 2019 budget process. Certainly you learn as much as you can about the various different options, the cost to, to the citizens and the appetite, but also utilize your strategic plan as a way to prioritize and understand, you know, if we have that need and if so, at what level and what for.
But it has to be on the ballot in 2019.
That's correct.
We'd have to have it long before.
That's why we're, we're suggesting to have these discussions now.
So at what point can we, I mean, I think that the Budget Advisory Committee, I mean, I would love for them to do some big picture research on different options. Are they starting that process now too, or can we request that of them, that they start looking at from a citizen's perspective?
We can certainly ask.
I know with the police building, we went out and actually hired somebody to do any kind of...
Yes, I think they have a meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
One of the items, and, and we'll talk a little bit more about this at the end of the meeting, but we got the preliminary results back from the citizen survey as well. And there was some questions asked about kind of general support for, for looking at some of these, whether it's capital maintenance or Parks and Rec funding. And so that is certainly a tool available to, to council and to, to the BAC that they perhaps could, could start with and, and learn a little bit more about. But I, I would suggest that if you provide that direction to them, that, that you give them some clarity as to how that interacts with your, your strategic planning process and what specifically you'd like them to take a look at.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item is call, council policy manual review. Assistant City Manager Mark Wolf is here to help us discuss the city council policy manual.
Hello.
Good evening again.
We, oh, I don't...
Thank you very much, Kathleen and Jenny.
All right. Everybody stretching their legs.
Yeah, I just...
Okay, back to council policies. So just to recap where we've been and where we are tonight. I think we'll obviously get through as much as we can and stop when we are tired and ready to move on. We already have set aside policies for next week's study session, at least most of it. So we'll get through what we can get through. You all approved the procedure manual on first reading at your last regular meeting. The policy manual, you have offered several recommended additions or changes so far. We have been collecting those and will continue to collect those. Attorney Brown is working on a new draft, and we'll add in any changes that you make tonight as well to that. And that will be presented before you adopt the final policy manual. This presentation will pick up where we left off. We had a very lengthy discussion about council discretionary funds. So this is the bullet point after that where we will start. This presentation does add a few items, I just want to highlight that in case you're using an old version. The council requested several topics to be maybe revisited or at least recap what decision you had made or what guidance you had provided. Those four items, off agenda topics, role of chair or the mayor, rules of decorum, and packet printing and distribution are items that I've included at the end. So certainly if you'd like to pull any of those, let me know. All right, where we left off. These are proposed new policies that are currently in the draft. These are, I believe, the last, no, these are not the last two that are currently in the draft. No, they are. Last two items that we have included in the draft for consideration. First is council vacancies, so memorializing your process in the event there's another vacancy, and telephonic participation, again, putting some parameters around that. So those are both in your, your current policy manuals. So perhaps getting feedback on each of those items would be helpful at this point.
Point of information, can you get me to a page on whether...
For those two?
Sure. Please.
They are towards the end of your manual. Telephonic participation is on page 25, it's section 11.
Thank you.
And vacancies is one before that.
Okay, thank you.
And just to make it clear, they're not, they're currently in the drafts, they're not currently in the...
Not current policy, they're in the draft policies in this policy, in your draft policy manual.
Okay, and, and they weren't changed. I know there's an updated one from the original one. On, the original one is on page 21. And the reason I'm using the original one is I went and marked everything up.
Oh, sure. No, neither of these policies were, were altered since that original draft, I believe.
Okay. Well, how do they... Well, how did they end up on different pages then?
That's a good question. I think there was maybe a table of contents added, and yeah, they should be.
Okay.
Relatively close.
Yeah.
All right. So is there any feedback on council vacancies? The only comment that I had, and I'm just throwing this out here for discussion purposes, is I really felt that this was unnecessary. I mean, this whole thing on council vacancies because it's covered in the charter itself, and actually, I felt like this was written for a specific thing that happened this time, which may never happen again, that our mayor would run for municipal judge. But in reading it again, I mean, it covers everything we did. We did it the way the charter listed, and so whenever anybody wants to jump in, that's fine. Councilmember Berentine?
For the three council vacancies that I've gone through on this council, we would have rewritten this policy three different times. So I thought that anything that was already in the charter, that was already outlined in the charter, we weren't going to try to redo. I mean, anecdotally, trying to address something, it would have been done three different times, three different ways. One for somebody committing a felony and going to prison, and one for dying, and one for getting elected. I don't know what the next vacancy will be or how it will be caused, but I think the charter, I don't, I didn't think we were going to write policies for anything that was already in the charter, and I don't think that it's probably a wise idea to do it that way, but.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, when you look at this compared to the charter, do you see helpful pieces here that are going to give us guidance, or do you think it's necessary?
I think it would have been helpful, let she show us. I think it would have been helpful to have a little more information. There were so many unknowns dealing, going into this particular circumstance, that all the council members were contacting me, saying, well, what if this happens, what if that happens? And I was flying by the seat of my pants with one sentence, basically, to try to answer all the questions. So the previous mayor actually asked me to draft something to put in the policy manual. And this is what I came up with, because I thought it allowed council to review some of the issues that I was asked to address, decide if this works for the council or if it doesn't. But at least in this way, the council's taking control of what will happen for future appointments, because as Councilmember Berentine has stated, there will be another one, you never know when. But it would be nice, I think, not just for the council, but also for your legal staff, to have a better idea of what the policy really is. And right at the moment, we just don't have much.
I guess I'm going to ask you, Mayor Protem, why do you think this isn't helpful, given the fact that the charter really doesn't have it? Doesn't have all this in it?
Well, the, actually, in this, the part of resignation of a council seat, there is something in the charter, and I didn't think, oh, Amy's got the charter. There is something in the charter about resignation, or the reasons people have to resign. There is something about vacancies, I have that is actually covered in the charter. The vacancy created by a mayor, I, all of this makes sense. The only thing, if, I don't have a problem. If we want to memorialize this in the policy manual, fine. There are some things in here that I, that bother me. And one thing that I did read out was under C, it's talking about the remaining council members elect a new mayor at any time from the point that the vacancy occurs in conformance with the charter. I don't have a problem with that, but this next sentence, if it so wishes, the council may wait until the new council member is installed before electing a new mayor. If that should occur, then the mayor pro tem would fulfill the functions of the mayor until a new mayor is elected. That, the mayor pro tem filling it is, happens normally, we don't need to add that in here. We also...
Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
I think that actually helps describe what just happened, because people ask me, well, did you vote for you to be mayor? And I said, no, she's mayor pro tem, and she's filling the mayor position until such time as we have a full seven to make a decision. So to me, this actually helps to explain it to people. It's written down, this is what we're doing.
But it's actually, it's written in other places, that's all I'm saying. It's a redundancy. But I also think that the, it's not if the council wishes, because the truth is, and what if the mayor died, like one other time, and so there's only six council members left? And I don't know whether they ended up appointing somebody, but what happened on this council, we were evenly divided over who we thought should be appointed. So state statute, and I read over this again last night, and as long as it's in conformance with everything, I just think those two sentences are unnecessary, because that happens. And each, the thing that concerns me is the charter is written in such a way that it's a general. So like Councilmember Berentine says, if the mayor dies, if the mayor is convicted of a felony, or if they're elected to a new position, it is the same process. So those are just my thoughts, that if we would have elected a mayor immediately, I don't know what happened when Oga Wilson died. Did they elect a mayor immediately, or?
She died in September, the election was weeks away, it didn't really matter.
Okay.
I mean, it was, it was a point.
The point when she died was...
Mayor Protem became the mayor.
Yeah, okay. But they actually filled the position until the election.
There was no contention, there was no contention and no argument, because the election was already underway. People, there were already candidates.
They were mayor pro tem until the end of it.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean...
I like this. I mean, if I can continue in my, I like this. I like it because it explains it to the citizen that they understand what the policy is that we're following that supports the charter, and I think that's what policy is for. Sometimes it goes and explains a little bit further what the one-liners say in our charter, and I think it's helpful. And yes, it'll probably change again, that's the prerogative of councils from year after year, and having a city attorney who looks at it and has to respond to questions, and can say, I think it'd be helpful if we wrote some of this down for the future. There will be another person who resigns in some way, that we will find unpredictable, probably.
Right.
I mean, when I, in the eight years I've been on, people talked about running for other offices all the time, and they could have run for another office, and so that could happen. Somebody could get moved with a job, you know, something positive, so.
Okay.
I like it. I think it's helpful, and if it helped our city attorney in articulating, if she could anticipate what else people would ask if this happened again, this is the best that she gave us, I think, great, let's go with it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I actually like the fleshed-out version as well. I think we all had a bunch of questions, and I think this really could have answered a lot of them. I like that it's all really spelled out, and I'm trying to think of another situation in which this doesn't cover what might happen, and I can't think of any, so I prefer the fleshed-out version to be in here as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
Well, I guess you never think about it until it happens, and it's always unique in what's going on. And what we're doing is putting, is interpreting the charter, given circumstances that we're under, and then putting it into law. And I think it's inappropriate, I think it's inappropriate to go ahead and bypass the charter and try to put into an ordinance for this council to try and dictate to any future council. I think part of the reason that it goes, I think part of the reason that it's overview is so that it can fit the situation, and it's not, the policy isn't written so that we can explain to the citizens what we're doing, we're supposed to explain to the citizens what we're doing. The policy is written to guide council in what they're doing, not to be an explanation for why we do something, but guidance for us, not something we fall back on and go, well, that's, I don't want to write, that's not a good reason to write policies. So I think that the way that the charter has it is probably really the best. And since we're memorializing these things into an ordinance and trying to put them into law, and what we're doing is interpreting the charter, I think that's inappropriate. And I think what we were going to, what we stated we were going to avoid doing was taking anything that was already in the charter.
Okay, thank you. Do you have something you want to share?
Just a point of clarification. Whatever the council wants to do on any of these policies is absolutely fine, but these are policies which are adopted by motion, they will not be law. They will be guiding policies. And if at any point, and this is true with your current policies, you did this just a couple of weeks ago, if at any point a policy doesn't fit your situation, at the very beginning of the current policy manual, and I've kept it in this one, is provisioned that a majority of the council can set aside a policy or modify it on the spot. So whatever you come up with, it really is your starting place to fall back on and at least provide that initial guidance. That, anyway, I just want to clarify, this will not be adopted by ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, in referring back to the charter, under Mayor Protem, after each general municipal election, the council shall elect a mayor pro tem who shall act as mayor during the absence of the mayor. And I think we did that. I believe that you were elected to pro tem that evening and have since filled the role since then. So I think that it's a couple of sentences, but it covered at least this scenario. I certainly agree that there's some more supportive language and kind of flushes it out, but I think in this particular case, charter, it gave us guidance and we followed it.
Absolutely.
So I guess I would be comfortable with the existing language in charter, without the additional language from the policy.
Right.
And I think it's a very, very unique situation that would happen, the, that the remaining council members elect a new mayor at any time from the point that the vacancy occurs. The open-endedness of that, I don't know that there's an obligation in this language that we even have to elect anybody after we get a seventh member. Would you read that the same way, City Attorney Brown?
We don't have a mayor right now.
True.
The way that, the way the current charter language is written, it really puts the authority for electing a mayor into the hands of the council as a whole. The council as a whole can elect a mayor at any time, they can remove a mayor at any time, as it currently says. So basically, this policy attempts to clarify what, how the council interprets that very, in my opinion, very vague rule of the charter. So I think that's the best answer I can give you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
And I would like to respond to that also, in light of what the city attorney shared the first time about council can remove the policy at any time. Then if there's a situation that arises that is different, and council decides they're going to interpret a policy different than what is written here, because it is different, the situation is different than what happened this last time, then council, and the council is divided over how they're going to interpret that. There was some flack gotten after how we made some of the decisions that we did about going to a special election, but we did it exactly the way it is here. We came to the same conclusion that was in here. I didn't even look at this. I mean, we knew that.
There was no this.
Hmm? There wasn't...
There was no this, so we were going by the charter.
Right.
But it's in the charter.
Right, it's in the charter, we came to the same, we came to the same conclusions.
Well, that's why, exactly what you were saying is why I think we need this, is that it was, people did come out to say, what, wait, what are you doing? Based on, this supports the charter. I don't find any, if we think any of this goes against the charter, we should be lining it out.
Right.
As long as it is not, and it's giving us some direction or giving a future council, even within a year, something could happen. Guidance is reminding us, okay, this is what we did this last time, it's sort of what it is, and here's how we can hope to handle it in the future. It's policy, it's not law.
Okay, but here's the scenario that I was trying to explain, is that if then we have a divided council, three people think that this doesn't apply, the charter should be determined differently, because the circumstances are different.
But this does, this supports the charter. There is, if there's anything in here...
In this circumstance, in this circumstance, it does.
In what circumstance? In all circumstances.
In the circumstance of what happened with the way the mayor, the way the vacancy was created. It doesn't fit the circumstances when somebody died. It doesn't fit the circumstances, I'm assuming...
So put it in as if somebody died. Let's say the mayor died. Heaven help us, thank you, he didn't.
Well, the previous one is... Would this have been any different?
That's for a point that...
Oh, okay.
There's quite a debate going on here, and I'm not sure how...
Okay. Yeah, you're right. So, let's go with other feedback, because I was just trying to tell you how I feel, and so there's kind of this debate going back and forth.
In some ways, it's helpful, because you're teasing out what you're thinking. I just don't see any, we can suspend the rule, but...
Well, and that's...
Someone else has theirs up.
That's true, so, yes, no one has theirs up, and so that's kind of why this was going on. The only thing that I would like removed, I'm okay if we leave it, is I do want, if it so wishes, the council may wait until the new council member is installed before electing a new mayor. If that should occur, then the mayor pro tem would fulfill the functions of the mayor until a new mayor is elected. I don't think we need that. I think the mayor can be elected at any time based on, the mayor should be elected at the election in November, but there, if there's a vacancy in the mayor's seat, that can happen at any time. I don't think we necessarily need that. Councilmember Martinez?
Oh, I was just going to say, I want to hear a little bit more about, I guess, why you'd prefer to have that out. So, you know, we reelect a mayor every two years, or however often we want to, so it's not like we have a mayor's seat that's all of a sudden vacant, that switches up all the time. So what could happen is what did happen. We had, you know, a split vote, and then we have to wait anyway. So I kind of like having that in here, because it's just clear, if council wishes, or, you know, can't agree, then you wait till you have the full council. I don't see what's negative about having that.
But that, and that would happen anyway. That would happen anyway, that's all that I'm saying. So I appreciate that. Do you have another question, too?
No, that was just clarification from you on that.
Okay, Councilmember Berentine, maybe?
We had Rita rule, and Cal's rule, and Bob's rule, and all kind of rules in there that had nothing to do with Robert's rules of order, the charter, it was in violation of the charter, actually. And it got followed. It got to be tradition, and the previous council did it, and the new council, people think it's done for some reason of not knowing the history, and I think it's dangerous when you start deciding that you're going to interpret the charter to this kind of extent based on circumstantial issues that are going on, that people may not understand the history of in the future. And I think that the charter is written the way that it is, so that at the time, people will take the time to interpret what they need to do and believe that they're following within the guidelines of the charter. And everything that we ended up doing was in the, followed the charter. I think it's dangerous when we start...
Okay, thank you. And actually, I do believe that we did, and we agree fairly well on that aspect of it. So Councilmember Wink, would you like to weigh in on what you think about this, council vacancies?
Sure. So, one, I feel if this language does not conflict with what's in the charter, I don't really have a problem with it being there. However, if as a body we decided that we will have absolutely no redundance between the policy manual and charter, and I actually don't recall a specific incident, I remember discussing it, but if that is what we all decided, then it seems simple to make sure that every step along the way, then, in our continued review of the policy documentation, that we make sure... that we make sure there's nothing, nothing is shared between the two documents. But I don't know that for certain at this moment. I'm going over and over and over it in my head, and I can't really recall.
Okay.
What I don't want is that we make that decision here, but in other places, we have redundancy between the policy document. You know what I mean?
Right.
Are we really doing that?
Right. So, what I'm going to ask you right now is, are you okay if we don't even have it in here in our policy manual, if it, if we would have come to the same conclusion from the Charter?
To be frank, Mayor Protam, I, my tendency here is to err on the side of over-informing as opposed to under-informing. It's safer, the more informative, the more we can reinforce something. If it's not hurting anything, I would leave it. When I think about, just the examples that we've brought up so far, which were based around citizens being uncertain of what we did or why we did it, and, I mean, there are two sources of information.
Well, and Charter is prevailing.
Exactly.
So-
Does every citizen know that? Will they all look there?
Yeah.
So, I didn't know that until I joined Council.
Okay.
Frankly.
So, I can go either way on this. I would like to X out that one sentence because it won't make any difference. That's what's going to happen anyway. That's the one that, if it so wishes, Council may wait until the new Councilmember is installed. That's going to happen regardless, if it's the mayor that the vacancy occurs at.
Forgive me, but what is the exact statement that's the same, that's in Charter? Did we read that earlier? Do you have that? Did I find that?
I can read what I have, what I have in the Charter here.
Do you mind? Just to-
Yeah.
And correct me, Allison, if this is what I'm, if what I'm reading is wrong or old. It says, vacancies, "An elected officer shall continue to hold his office until his successor is duly qualified. An elective office shall become vacant whenever any officer becomes incapacitated or if a councilman shall remove from or become a non-resident of the district in which he was elected during the term of his office. In case of a vacancy, the remaining councilmen shall choose by majority vote, and within 30 days after such vacancy occurs, a duly qualified person to fill such vacancy. He shall serve until his successor elected for the remainder of the term at the next ensuing general municipal election has been duly qualified. If three or more vacancies exist in the Council simultaneously, such vacancies shall be filled for their respective unexpired terms at a special election."
So, that doesn't specifically speak to, thank you for reading that, it doesn't specifically speak to the vacant mayor's seats.
Or any, any other vacancy other than becoming incapacitated or moving out of the area.
So, it seems like it's-
I am seeing some duplicative mayor language, too.
You what?
I am seeing some duplicative mayor language, not verbatim, but if I may. After each general election, the Council shall elect a Mayor Protam who shall act as mayor during the absence of the mayor.
Can you tell her where you're reading?
Yes, and I am in Section 25 of Charter.
Under mayor?
Yes, I've read that part, too.
And then, so again, I would say the important part, the Council shall elect a Mayor Protam who shall act as mayor during the absence of a mayor. And then, in the policy, we have, if it so wishes, Council may wait until the Council member is installed before electing a new mayor. If that should occur, then the Mayor Protam would fulfill all function of the mayor until a new mayor is elected. And that's where I'm seeing pretty similar language between policy.
So, say what you think. Are you in the Charter on that or the old policy?
I'm in draft policy for the second statement. And then, the first Charter, 25, Section 25, "The Council shall elect a Mayor Protam who shall act as mayor during the absence of a mayor." And that's what I'm getting in Charter. And then, in the draft policy, I'm getting, "If it so wishes, the Council may wait until the new Councilmember is installed before electing a new mayor. If that should occur, then a Mayor Protam would fulfill the function of a mayor until a new mayor is elected." And that's where I'm seeing those languages being pretty identical.
But that, and that's a combination of the Charter and the policy.
The first one was Charter, and then the second one was the draft policy.
So, I think the difference, thank you for reading that, Dave. I think the difference is that the Charter, as you just read it, doesn't cover that line about Mayor Protam, about-
If it so wishes.
Taking, waiting until a seventh member's added, or, you know, that piece before. So, the piece that focuses on the flexibility and the right of Council to decide when they want to select or appoint a new mayor, right?
Right.
It almost seemed, go ahead.
And all I'm saying is, according to what he just read, is that as long as there's a Mayor Protam filling the position, Council can wait until, until the seventh person is seated.
Correct.
If it happens to be the mayor.
But the absence of the language suggests that Council could suddenly be forced into a position to absolutely appoint one with fewer than seven.
I don't see, I don't see it either way.
I'm looking at what's not, no?
I don't see it either way, because the truth is, if there's only six, it is a possible ability of three, three type. Councilmember Olson?
Well, I think in this situation, what happened, I really want to end this conversation. We're spending way too much time on something that's really, it really isn't needed. I like what's here, and the reason for it is because it helps explain it. This is one line that happens all the time, but it still didn't answer the questions people were asking, well, what's going to happen now? We actually did have to elect you as Mayor Protam at the time, and people didn't know what was going to happen with Joe. It was like, what's happened? I think this helps, gives, fills in a little bit more. That's all it does. I don't care. Let's move on. It's how big of a deal? I mean, maybe we have a consensus of three to three again, and if so, I don't care. Go ahead, take it out. I really don't care. I think more information in the policy, helping people understand, and yes, I do think it does inform all of us, and you can say it doesn't, but it does. It helps us say, we've looked at some of this stuff and go, oh, my goodness, we never followed this. What wasn't law, it was policy that we were, you know, we're probably dumb not to have been following some of it, but we weren't, and so we took it out.
Uh huh.
We will follow.
Okay. So, if you don't care, we can take it out. I mean, it's, I mean-
Why am I acquiescing on that?
No, you don't.
No, you don't have to acquiesce. That's why really-
It's split, right?
That's what you offered, and so I would, I would take that.
Right.
Because it does matter to me, because it is important to me. We are doing this 2020 hindsight. We had the Charter. We navigated through it. We made the decision that we could go ahead and put it off, and we, we didn't have to do the mayor. We did all of these things based off of that sentence, and we worked together or had divisions and made decisions based off of that, given the situation we had. And we're trying at 2020 hindsight to go, let's memorialize what we did in this certain circumstance because what we ended up doing was the right thing. Maybe it won't be for the next Council, and they should go through that exercise like we went through the exercise and how we got to the end result that we did.
Right. So, I will take back, I disagree with you. I think we should leave it in there, and I think for the very reasons she just gave is why we do policy. It is in hindsight. It is to help explain what happened. It will help the next one know, this is how they did it last time. This is how we left it open. This is what we did. So, I would say-
I'd rather write it in a diary and not policy.
And the Charter is not, you know, sorry, I'm coming from a certain religious background, but it's not canon, you know? It's not as if it was written, we've already seen stuff in our Charter that's like, wow, we don't understand sometimes. So, it's not the word of God, and so it is fallible if we're going to find that along the way. So, policy helps to give us some background, and I, that's why, and that's why I'm going to keep pushing for more than less, because I think it's helpful.
Okay. So, then what, the next, and part of the reason we've spent so much time on this, and really, this is the reason I wanted these to come forward early in the evening, but I will tell you, I have appreciated the civility in this discussion. I have. So, but we're at a three-three impasse on this, and, I mean, I don't want to vote down the whole Council policy because of this. So, let's put this on the back burner, and we'll bring this up again. So, Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say, I think we're trending one topic per hour for our scheduling. So, we should probably schedule the time accordingly.
Well-
Because last time, we scheduled, we had like three or four topics, and we got to like one or two topics, and so it seems like for this part, the ending of it, it's taken an hour per one topic item.
The bottom line is, I knew that that topic and the next topic are going to take the longest of probably all the discussions.
So, did the last two topics?
Which two? The discretionary? The discretionary? But we went over every single thing.
We did.
And, and this is huge. This is the first time this Council has ever done a resolution. We've been supposed to do it, and it's not ever been done before. And I think that the policy over years, we didn't even go over it that in-depth when we got appointed to Council.
A point of information, can I please ask Councilmember Martinez, what are you asking for that you believe that the next topic is going to take an hour?
At least schedule one hour for that topic. Instead of saying, we have five topics, we have one hour to talk about it.
Okay. The next topic's going to take a long time. What I have to say about it probably will be very short and/or repetitive, but I agree with you that it's probably going to take a long time, so everybody has to decide what they want to do.
Okay. So, I think probably what we're going to need to do is, it's already quarter till nine. I think we should go ahead with Councilmember's choice and everything else because it'll be later than nine by that. I know, I'll be very, no, we'll talk about this during Councilmember's choice because I think we are very close. I think these two, in my opinion, I knew that these two, the telephonic participation and the one we just did, were going to take the longest. So, and maybe, maybe I'll be pleasantly surprised. Now, if you want to go ahead and do, start telephonic participation this evening, I'm willing to do that. What's-
I'm happy to dive in, but if people want to call it a night, that's fine.
Okay. I think Councilmember Martinez is correct. It's going to take a long time, and I think Councilmember Olson is correct that we don't do that well after nine o'clock, especially with contentious issues. So, I would prefer that, especially-
I think I sit four to five hours.
Especially what sometimes I perceive is kind of diminishing behavior that gets kind of, that ends up seeing, we end up getting more sensitive at that, and this is going to be a, okay, somewhat of a sensitive subject, and I would appreciate it if we were a little more realistic about it. Assistance to the attorney.
About how long it would take? Can you say realistic?
I think Councilmember Martinez is correct. We have, even on the other issues, taken an hour, let alone the contentious ones.
I'm way to go to nine forty-five, if people have it in.
I am, too.
No?
Okay.
Well, maybe not. Okay, fair enough.
Just a second. When is, is it on the agenda for, it's on the agenda next week, but we only have one hour.
That's right.
Is that the only thing on the agenda next week?
It is at this point, though, under City Manager's choice. I was going to talk to you about one potential item. The ninth is packed at this moment, so we can, we can look at that together, but, you know, we are starting to get out into later April, and we have a significant amount of time.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Well, I, I would like to at least do a round robin on this one and see. Like, I'm fine with the way it is. I think that's great.
Okay. So, we'll do a round robin, and let's not, let's commit to not spending more than five minutes on this right now, and then we'll go from there. So, I'm going to open up telephonic participation for discussion. Councilmember Olson's fine with it just the way it is. Someone else?
I'm also fine with it the way it is currently.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine?
It's absolutely ridiculous. We got one experience with it. It was a joke. The citizens were pissed, and I have absolutely no support for this whatsoever. It was absolutely a laughing stock.
Okay. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. Just want to ask if we can keep the meeting positive while we share the information we have, and what, what is it? What is, I don't know what's being-
Telephonic participation.
That the citizens thought was a joke.
Okay. So, explain-
I'm sorry.
She has a point of information, that's one thing. I believe it's positive anytime I provide information that the citizens have given, and it would-
I was referring to the, just the tone of voice and aggression.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine, she asked a question for a point of information. What is it? What is it that the citizens were upset about? So, explain what it is that the citizens were upset about, please.
Exactly what I said. The one, that's what I'm talking about, this kind of, we don't do well, even close to nine. I said we had one experience with telephonic participation. I said, then, that one experience was a joke, that being it. It was a joke. People were in the audience laughing, making comments. We don't have control over the equipment or whether something moves. The next opportunity, somebody had to do it. I thought they were pretty wise in not taking the opportunity considering what happened with that. They didn't end up getting an opportunity to vote. We were given information that was incorrect about what other municipalities do, because I was still, Cherry Hills did it, and then I went and talked to them, and they don't allow people to vote. So, I think we need some additional information. Then, if you even look at the wording in this proposed telephonic policy, if that's clear enough, it's, it already is negative in what it's saying about telephonic participation and the pitfalls to it and the problems with it. Then you get into the open meetings and the right of the people who are in that, in that meeting to go ahead and know what's going on with their elected official, whether there being, what, if I can be open record for what I do on my phone during a meeting, you can't see that person, you don't know what's going on with them, you don't know what's influencing them, you don't know what else they're accessing, who else they're with, who else they're talking to, which everybody in the audience can do when we're up on the dais. And if you have a conversation with somebody else on the dais, the citizens have a right to know what it was that was said, what information is being garnered, so that they know what you're pulling in to get information. And I don't want this to be the person-specific, it's just the way the meeting ended up happening, trying to get the phone line back on, to try and, I mean, what was going on in the audience was, they were not respecting the process and what was going on, and we can't control that. And I think what we're doing is very dangerous. But even the wording that we're trying to look at here is, there's nothing positive about the wording to even do it. We've got wording in a policy to do something that's warning us practically not to do it, and then telling us that even if we do do it, we can only do it one time and limiting all of it. So, if it was such a great thing, we wouldn't have even the wording that we have. So, just all the way around this. It's got a lot of pitfalls.
All right. Thank you. I will weigh in on this also, because you were waiting to be appointed to Council that night when this happened, and the one example we have, it didn't work. I've talked to Matt Crabtree, who is out of the country a lot and does a lot of telephone participation in different types of meetings, and he said that, he said, 25% of the time, you only can hear what's going on 25% of the time. It is not, it's not as stable. I mean, even this Council knows that the night that we tried to use Skype to interview people for boards and commissions, it's not, it's hard. You can't count on it. And the night that the Councilmember called in, and then we couldn't get her back, and there was three attempts to get her again, and the audience was getting frustrated over having to wait and take their time. And it is just, and I agree, in this policy itself, it says, telephonic, however, telephonic participation has inherent limitations because telephonic participation effectively precludes a Councilmember from viewing documentary information presented during meetings, from fully evaluating a speaker's nonverbal language in assessing veracity or credibility, and from observing nonverbal explanations, pointing at graphs and charts during a speaker's presentation or testimony in addition, telephonic participation during executive sessions prevents the city or testimony in addition, telephonic participation during executive sessions prevents the city from ensuring compliance with state law. The city council, or the council finds that these limitations inherent in telephonic participation may produce inefficiencies in meetings, increase the expense of meetings, and may undermine the decision-making process, particularly in quasi-judicial matters. It is actually even listing in this policy the inherent problems with telephonic participation. There were council, or there were citizens that came forward the next week during public comment to explain the definition of what present means and what absent means. And I did hear from quite a few people that think that we should not pass telephonic participation at this time. So, that is the input that I have. Councilmember Martinez?
Point of order. We have not spoken yet. I was gonna turn it over to Councilmember Wayne.
Okay.
Still in the round robin, that is.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Member Questa. And we also said we weren't gonna spend more than five minutes.
Okay.
Are we okay?
Yes.
We're way over five minutes.
Actually, let's go, let's go till nine o'clock, and we'll just, we'll reevaluate.
So, you want my opinion on telephonic participation. I am fine removing it. There are many good reasons listed here. I'm a little flexible, but I'm okay removing it. I feel if I were on a phone away from the present room of citizens, I don't know. I think there's something with the interaction, with body language, with how we share and see what's happening in the room that adds veracity, as is mentioned there, in my opinion, to the meeting and to what we're offering to the city and the citizenry. So, I would be okay removing it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Questa?
For me, going to be one, telephone participation tends to be infrequent and occasional substitution, and we'll allow it once per year. It seems to me if it's something we're discouraging and will allow it once per year, that we, in my opinion, it's something that we shouldn't be allowing, just generally. And also, if we were to move forward with it, the per-year kind of strikes me in that, so I, Councilmember Wayne, I started in November. So, could we have had one in November, and then we'd have one in the fall if you did it per calendar year? Or would it be per your elected term years? Because technically, you could squeeze five out of your term. Just, I would like a little bit more definition there if we were to move forward with it. But I would probably not support it the one time.
Okay, so, I will, with that being said, I do believe we have consensus to remove it. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't discuss this at some future point, when technology becomes even more efficient than it is today. So, Councilmember Martinez, I will recognize you.
Sure, I just want to say, we all know that that was the meeting I was on the phone. It's no secret. That was a very unusual circumstance. I was in the middle of the ocean, so the phone didn't work. That was very unusual. But we've also had telephonic participation in study sessions several times since I've been on council, and it was a non-issue. So, I guess, just want to make sure that we're clear, we're including that if we take that out as well.
So, you don't want participation in study sessions, or you-
Well, I assume that that would be part of this.
I, this here, I think, is only addressing council meetings, but, okay, Councilmember Olson?
I have the same question. As I reread it just here sitting now, I, I think it does say, any meetings, including study sessions. And that has not been the practice of the past at all. We've, we've had people flat on their back having back surgery where they've called in for a study session, or had something that was contagious where they really could have participated, but they were not supposed to come around people, and they've called in. And you can hear, and you can see, and you can participate. It's not easy. It's not the way I would like to do study sessions, because study sessions are really want to be there for. But I would hope we could massage this to allow for it in study session as needed for people who, who have things that happened, where it really would be good for them to be here. We had someone that was out for three weeks because of what they had.
Okay.
And they really wanted to keep participating, at least in that part. They did not call in over there, but they did for this, so.
All right.
I would prefer to see study session put back in there in some reasonable way, then.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I don't object to the study session, because the study session, decisions are not made. They're not supposed to be made. And so, there is no, they're supposed to be informational, and informational is not the same as voting. So, there's no decision made. That wouldn't be a problem. I think some information has to be brought forward, some recognition of how you even- I'm being respectful.
Okay. It's in the B. Yeah, we're ready to rewrite it.
Can you finish, Councilmember Berentine?
Oh, I'm finished. I didn't know you were looking for me to finish. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I thought I had the floor.
You did.
Oh, okay.
Now you don't.
In that case, the-
We're done.
No.
Okay. The concern about the being present was also as to whether it created a quorum or not. And that has to be something that gets discussed, whether somebody who is on the phone is present or not. Because somebody can be present on the phone and then instantaneously not present. Your situation was not that unique, as Matt Crabtree brought up, as we've had numerous times in study sessions where people just got disconnected, or, love, that happened to you a couple of times when you were doing it. So, I, we have to come up with some, at least some guidelines, even if we're gonna do it in study session, so that if somebody's on the phone and that creates a quorum, in order to even have the meeting at all, that we have some kind of guidelines on that, if we decide to move forward with this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Questa?
And I would support telephonic participation in the study session. And as, as it's written now, study sessions are explicitly included in the one-time-per-year rule. Thank you, Mayor Berentine.
All right, thank you.
Just to clarify one, one thing, one of the reasons why this was even in here is that I think staff was in a bad position without, within the absence of a policy when we were requested to, to note, note on the agenda that telephonic participation may occur. So, if council wishes to not allow it, then that be an explicit policy, as opposed to just not include it at all, so that we have something to point to, as opposed to have an absence of policy.
Yes, I think that's-
That is great.
So, um-
And one point of, okay, is that one person making a decision on that because council had not decided to do that? So, we may need to address that as we're moving forward. I mean, that got put under the agenda without any kind of process whatsoever.
Well, I think what he was saying is that staff didn't have a policy not to put it on.
It wasn't prohibited.
Yes, it wasn't.
Yes, they did. The process of how we do the agenda and the process of how we make decisions is never staff being directed by one individual person for one, one issue. So, I think that'll be part of the policies that we do.
Okay.
That's been a concern.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to add one thing, one thing that I did also tell the mayor about that before anything else went forward. I talked to him about that, so.
So, and the mayor may have moved that forward. I don't know, but, okay. Councilmember Olson?
And that has happened since, anyway, let's make sure we have something in this policy, then, that, that regulates this, saying we don't allow it, so that you and others in the future don't have to be caught off-guard in five years or whatever.
Okay.
And so, that means bringing something back to us, and then including the study session.
We'll try and summarize the discussion and bring back our response.
It'll be a lot shorter. And we did it.
Perfect, yes.
Before nine o'clock.
Okay, let's move on to, oh. Are you still here? Let's, should we go ahead? You can do an abbreviated financial.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
We're gonna surprise you on the next round, Mark.
That'll be done.
Surprise you.
Good evening. This is February Financials, Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Wrinkle is here to review February 2018 monthly financial report. Good evening again.
Good evening again. So, we'll hit the highlights in this one, so that we can be brief. If you have any questions, please make sure you ask. I'd be happy to answer them. We're through the year at sixteen point seven percent, two months into the year. So, with that in mind, we've, revenues are exceeded our expenses by a little over one point seven million. And that's comparative to last year, was one point five million at this time. So, we're in a little better position with revenues. And we're looking at expenditures lower than budget. We've, I have thirteen point five percent spent, and we're at sixteen point seven percent through the year. So, comparative to last year, we're in a little bit better position. I don't want to call us in a strong position at this point, because it's so early in the year, but definitely favorable. So, with that, I'd like to point you to the first page, where you can see very clearly the little blue bar and the orange bar, or red bar in the box, that says general fund revenue and expenditure monthly comparison. You can see clearly that the revenues are exceeding the expenditures at this point. On the next page, I'd like to point out the expenditures by department. And you can see in the one, two, three, fourth column over, where it says percent budget of 2018, we have two units that are over the sixteen point seven percent of the year at this point, one being the legislation, which is the city council. And what's driving that is that we've got timing on aid to other agencies and subs, I can't even talk at this time of night, some subscriptions. So, that's just a timing thing, since they don't happen every month of the year. We pay them upfront, and then it just kind of coasts until we get to the end of the year. That was typical, and that was the same way we spent last year as well. The city manager has the fire department contract in his budget, and that gets paid a month in advance. So, at this point, we've got January, February, and March that are paid, and that's what looks like it's over. When we get to December, we don't make a payment, and everything levels out. Everyone else is slightly under target at this point. On the next page, we've got the area income. So, in looking at the sales and use tax by area, you'll see that we've got three of them that are over in a major way, Area Two, Area Three, and Area Five. Area Thirteen isn't far behind. You will notice that we've got one, Area Four, that is down. What that actually is, is a transfer of a business that moved from Area Four to Area Three. Was the Williams Jewelers?
Hyman's.
Oh, oh, wow, across the street.
They moved across the street.
I didn't know that was a difference in an area.
Yeah, just right on the border there.
Can you remind me which area the old Kmart site was in? Was that four?
I can't recall. I apologize.
Are they three with Brookridge, or are they?
I really can't recall.
I guess we'll find out next time.
I can find out for you.
It's Area Four, isn't it? Because it's south of Bellevue.
That's right.
Okay. What I'd also like to point out is you have an Area Fourteen on here now. And that is where we broke out the internet sales from Area Seven and brought it down to Fourteen. Now, that's not all of the sales. Those are the key ones that we can identify at this point. We're working on truing that up and getting that a little bit better.
So, if you separated them out, are the ones in Fourteen definitely ours, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, those are internet sales. Kmart's a very good example. They have both brick and mortar and internet.
Walmart.
Oh, Walmart, sorry, not Kmart.
All right, talking Kmart earlier.
Well, so did Kmart when they were-
Yeah. And then I'm gonna, most of these are informational. What I would like to do is point you to, to Page Seven. Hopefully, it's Page Seven in your packet as well. It starts at the top with the specific ownership and has hotel motel at the bottom. I'd like to point to those two, because we have such a large change between Sixteen and Seventeen. And Seventeen, the specific ownership tax are people buying cars. And I think because of the economy being so good, that's what we're see, we saw in Seventeen. Our Eighteen budget is forecasted much more conservatively than what we experienced in Seventeen. And I know that was a big car-buying year, because both my niece and my daughter bought one, so. Hotel motel tax at the bottom is also up. Now, this isn't a huge amount. It goes from like twelve thousand to maybe eighteen, eighteen and a half. So, it's, it's not a huge portion of our budget, but it was an increase. I can't tell you exactly what's driving that, but to note that we've had a little bit more activity there. And I'd like to move to my favorite colored chart on Page Twelve, and point to Area Seven, Area Fourteen. You can see those graphically. What I did want to note was, we are looking at a business type to separate that large green column of outside sales per Member Questa's request, and we're looking at a business type, so we will have that for the next report. We just got the philosophy together and, or gathering the data, so.
Oh, wait, point of information. So, the Fourteen area that's there now is?
Used to be Seven.
Used to be what?
Area Seven. We've separated it.
But then it's got a small little-
You're talking about the online?
The online sales?
Oh, sorry, that is the online, okay.
Yeah.
Separated out the online for Seven, and that's Fourteen.
That's why it makes Seven look like it's dropped so much.
I also thought that he was, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you were, if you were asking for, so, so then you're gonna take Seven and slice it up
Exactly.
by different types within the brick and mortar.
Exactly. And we'll do that for a few of the prior years as well, so you've got a comparison.
Can you add Fourteen and Seven together?
We, if I add the two together, we actually have a small drop of one point three percent, as compared to last year.
Thanks.
And that was the abbreviated version.
Councilmember Questa, did you have?
Yeah, quickly, Area Five is up significantly. It was up fifty percent. There were two new businesses that came in. It looked like the loss of one business. Do you know what those two businesses were?
I don't have the detail at this point, but I can get that for you.
I think it's the King Super Shopping Center. I bought a few more pizzas at that Little Caesar's, but I don't think it's enough to drive up.
That was it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
I did want to go back to the Area Four with the Williams Jewelers. I'm wondering if that is Kmart, if it's more about Kmart than about Williams. Like, do we know, I mean, we're expecting-
Well, we saw that towards the end of last year, in, in these two areas, starting in November. We saw the huge difference with one dropping and one going up. That was when they actually moved over to the other building, so that's why we're, we're laying the, I'm not gonna call it playing, but the, the change on the jewelers.
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Berentine?
When do you expect we're gonna get the first quarter? And, I mean, are you, are you planning on, when are we gonna get the first quarter numbers?
The first quarter numbers? So, through March, you mean? We should have those about the third week of April for you.
So, it only takes you, the deadline is what, the fifteenth? So, it only takes you another week or two to get that information?
Oh, you mean the fourth quarter sales? Okay, no, those are due on, I thought you meant the fourth quarter report. Those are due on April fifteenth, so we actually see them come in a little bit later, and we'll have that in the May report.
And then the CAFR, have you even started?
The CAFR's started, and we've got the date on the calendar for you guys to review it, but I can't remember that at this point.
So, when are we?
We did that last year in May, so.
So, I, I know, we all know that the year-end number already changed, so the three point one?
Three point one is what we're looking at. We're still adjusting, so this is not a final, but this is the most current numbers we have for Seventeen.
So, when are you kind of gonna have a good idea about that?
We should have that as soon as the auditors leave in April, but we won't present the CAFR until May. So, I, we'll update whatever numbers we've got in Seventeen with the most current ones we have for each report.
And that's only significant in that we need to make sure that we're not making any decisions about moving any money or spending any additional capital projects until that's a more solid number, one way or the other, so that we know what's going on.
It's tightening up day by day, so we know that it's not two point eight now. We know it's three point one based on what we have today. I don't believe there will be any large changes that drag it down. If anything, it should go up a little bit, based on where we are, but it's a pretty solid number.
But if we could kind of schedule it around the same time, just, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Wrinkle? Okay, councilmembers' choice. Who would like to start?
I would. We had a, an email come through from a gal who said that she's homeless and has been on vouchers.
Speak up a little bit.
I'm sorry. She's been at that hotel, she said, for eight months. She can't be at that hotel for eight months. Our hotels are not set up to be more than thirty days. It's not legal. They're not supposed to be renting long-term. They are not apartments. They are not places for people to stay. And when we allow this, when we allow this, what we do is, we don't encourage other alternatives that are better and safer for people in that- encourage other alternatives that are better and safer for people in that situation. We place them in harm's way, because they cannot cook there. They can't maintain food there. That's why those places are not... A hotel, no hotel, is supposed to be more than a 30-day stay, unless it has the amenities to allow somebody to live in dignity and safe. And that's the problems that happened with the hotels before, because people were knocking out things, trying to do hot plates, and problems were happening. And I don't want to have... See a bad situation happen. Also, when we allow this and then go, well, where else would they go? We don't force the... We don't force the issue so that we fix the problem. We just keep band-aiding it, and then putting people in these kind of situations is not appropriate. It didn't go well before, and I don't think this is appropriate. There was also at the meeting on that Thursday, where somebody said that they had ended up being at one of these hotels there for 17 months. That's absolutely ridiculous.
You said that for years.
Huh?
I thought it said for years.
Or seventeen... Oh, you're right. Oh, my gosh, you're right.
Yep.
So, we can't allow that, because what we're doing is... A quick fix is not necessarily the right one, and that's... It's just not appropriate. We need to go back and make sure that these hotels... I have pictures on my phone. Of course, anybody calling homeless people a lot. Why would they lie about that? But they went and they showed me. And there are... I took the pictures of the inch, two-inch gaps that are under the doors, where they tell me that the vermin just walk into their room. So, we need to make sure that if we're... If the taxpayers are paying for vouchers, to try and make sure that people have a place to be warm, because we don't have enough other shelters. Maybe there should be other shelters instead of using these hotels, like we misuse them. And maybe we'd come up with solutions if we had to. But we need to examine what's going on with these hotels again, because the feedback that I'm getting does not make them look like they are the best or safest alternative. I mean, if I'm just looking at the one issue with the gap under the door, which takes a little door sweep at Home Depot to go ahead and prevent something like that, I think it's ridiculous that we're not enforcing that. And I agree, when somebody comes to me, whether they're homeless or not, and tells me, "The city has a responsibility to make sure that these things are up to code, and that people are safe, and that the rules are being followed. This is for a for-profit business. It's not a nonprofit." So, we need to at least look into it and see if we could get the report back from the last inspection. I know that they did. I thought about six months ago, and so I'm a little confused on how that went. So, if we could get that information as well, and how we're going to address these issues moving forward, the staying over 30 days, and at least if we could get the doors closed up, so rats can't walk in. I appreciate that as a start.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez, do you have anything?
Sure. Just great turnout for the Change the Trend Network event, so I appreciated going to that. Councilmember Berentine and I are also the liaisons to the school district Board of Education, and we have a joint meeting with them coming up for a subcommittee. So, if there's anything you'd like us to bring to that discussion or ask, let us know. And I also had a death in the family recently, so I wanted to say thank you to the team, the police department, and everyone who's helped through that process.
Sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay. Councilmember Olson?
Tomorrow night is the gala for the Angler Chamber of Commerce. I think everybody RSVP probably that want to be there, but don't forget to go. It's just down here, so it's easy. And I think that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Parks and Rec did have the Great Egg Scramble on Sunday, and there were a ton of kids there, and it was lots of fun. The sponsors, who deserve thanks, were Kids Tooth Duck, American Family Care, Chick-fil-A was there, and Texas Roadhouse as well. But thanks to Parks and Rec for putting that on.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
I don't have much. I just want to reiterate what a great turnout we had at the Change the Trend Forum the other night. The room was so packed, so I was just really thrilled to see the engagement, to see several members from the homeless population, some of whom spoke out. I thought that was helpful for all of us in the room to hear from them, hear their own voices. So, I think it was a beginning conversation. There's obviously... It wasn't intended to solve every issue and provide every solution, but I just look forward to having more discussions like that in our community with equal fervor in participation. I really enjoyed seeing that.
Great. Thank you. And I just wanted to bring up the Change the Trend also went. There was a great turnout to that. Have been getting a lot of feedback about that also. And also, the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee has been meeting on a more regular basis, and I think things are moving in a more positive direction. I believe last Wednesday night maybe was one of the first open and honest discussions that I felt have taken place. So, we'll see, you know, the direction that it's going. But anyway, just wanted to update you on that. And some of the other concerns that I have, I think, are probably going to end up being addressed in the policy manual when we finish those. So, I'm not going to take time on that this evening. So, Assistant City Manager?
Yeah, a few items tonight, Council. One is doodle poll for your strategic plan retreat. I think a few of you are still lingering out there. We don't have consensus on a date right now. We have some conflicts already. So, if you could just go in and fill that out, and I'll work through Mayor Protem Russell on trying to identify a date. I'd hate to push it out longer. I mean, we already identified a couple of weekends into May. So, again, related to our discussion tonight, I would hope that we could get that in before the budget process really gets too late in development.
And along that lines, can I just say, there was one weekend that... It happens to be the fifth Monday, and I decided not to commit to that, because that gives us a break. So, and I... At the time that I signed up for the doodle poll, I realized that there were quite a few people there.
Right. On the bright side, you wouldn't have a Monday meeting after a Saturday.
Yeah, but you can't leave town.
But you can't leave town.
Go anywhere either.
I know. Anyway, if the others could just take a look at those dates, and maybe we can get close and work on some others, alternatives, if they don't work.
Is there... Was that the first date that we... I mean, the first date, is it possible to do it the weekend before, a Saturday before the ones that were on the list, or not?
I'd have to look.
We're two missing on it, right? So far, lines up there.
Great. Now, there's two missing. I think we had... When I looked last, earlier this afternoon, there were three out of six that had responded.
I did it.
And then staff also was in there responding to that as well.
Okay. All right. So, if you'll look at that.
Your presence is more clear.
Did you find a course and do it in blocked times?
Not yet. I was trying to get closer to understanding what the date might be to reach out.
Because I'm thinking, if we're going to use it also as a team builder, which sounded like... I think we should do some of this after the election, so that we have our seventh member with us. So, if there's a way to do it hard, hard, might be that way to do it anyway.
It's not going to be that last weekend of May. I'm not doing that. I like the whole thing.
So, we really focus on what are some priorities we know are going to impact the budget, and then we can...
Okay. Well, I think we have to have consensus on when everybody can come first, so...
And I just did it myself. The 28th has everybody, with the exception of, I think you just alluded to.
Yeah, well, I'll put myself in her court then, because I didn't even know it was the fifth weekend.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm going to dread Linda on the protests and not doing anything.
I mean, I'm planning to stay here, but it would be nice to have a full...
Two, almost two weeks, right?
So, those breaks are useful.
Okay, so...
We'll work on it. I would just reiterate that if we keep delaying that strategy session, I worry about council being able to produce a strategic plan that is useful in 2018. So, that's just the last warning.
I will go back in, too, and see if I can get the other early ones. Okay.
We'll try to work on it.
If you commit to not doing it that fifth, you pick one. I'll go, but I'm not going on that fifth.
Okay.
Study session next week. The only item, I know we have policies to get through. We only have the hour. We have preliminary results back, final draft. I believe they'll be final this week for the community survey results. So, we wanted to make sure, again, continuing that feedback from the community, to provide a quick presentation and full data, but to walk through some of the highlights of that. So, that can either be handled on the second or on the night, but it's certainly applicable. Community budget workshops. Again, we have a placeholder in the Citizen Magazine for budget workshops. June probably is a bit early. There's also some conflicts towards that the end of June. I know that a second meeting, a community meeting on Change the Trend, is being scheduled in June. Late June, I believe, is one of those items. I forget there's another conflict off the top of my head. So, we were looking at the second and third week in July to try to set aside further two or three. Last year, we did four. I think that was fine, but you also just did two. So, maybe two or three seems comfortable. I could work through Mayor Protem on just identifying specific dates. If that sounds all right, we wanted to try to get it in the magazine, so it's in people's houses.
Do you want all of those again, like this one, or can it be? Because if we're going to do three, I mean, I would hate to hold it up, because you're trying to get all of that in these.
We could advertise them as coming, those two weeks in July, and go at it from that perspective. I know that our communications manager would tell me that it's better to identify a specific date and time.
No, I think...
I think she's asking if you want us there.
I'm sorry.
Want us off here and called there, like you did, for the other ones that we just did?
Right. So, the distinction is that these won't be council-led strategic planning. These will be more presentation of the budget, but council participation is key for that as well. So, as many as possible.
Sorry, Mark. Did council attend all of those last year? I remember we had a cultural arts meeting, or there was some reason I couldn't attend them, but did council attend all four of those last summer or last year?
Not everyone.
Not everyone.
We did have some council participation.
Some membership, okay.
And actually, I think the council participation, just in the strategic plan thing, went really well.
Absolutely.
And we got great feedback. And so, I think it's... It would be good if we could participate, I think.
Yep, absolutely. So, I'll try to... I'll look at the calendar. If those two weeks sound okay, then we'll try to make two or three dates work in those two weeks that don't look like they have major conflicts with committees, or as many committees as we can avoid as possible. And then lastly, I'm assuming that the general kind of silence on the budget discussion from earlier is that you all are generally okay with those next study sessions over the next few weeks, bringing back some of those items. I think maybe we can outline a plan for which items on what day and bring it back next week, maybe just under City Manager's choice, when manager checks back in town, just to close that loop. Sounds okay?
That sounds good.
Okay, perfect. That's it. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney?
Your report?
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.